We started.
Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm School Committee Chair Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask my colleagues to please unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the republic. Which it stands. One nation.
Nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty.
And justice.
Justice.
For all. Because this is a remote meeting, I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins. Mr. Cadet Hernandez. Ms. Lopera.
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Meta. Ms. Palanco Garcia.
Present.
Mr. Tran.
Present.
Mr. O'Neill.
Present.
Ms. Robinson.
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion for the School Committee to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect to their to. To have this discussion in an open meeting would compromise the safety of our students and staff. The committee will return, will return to public session at 6:00 PM. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins. Mr. Cadet Hernandez. Ms. Lopera.
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Tran.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. The committee just returned from an executive session for the purpose of discussing the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect here to. To have held this discussion in an open meeting could have compromised the safety and security of students. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the School Committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the February 1st meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. Committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Asian Creole, Cabo Variano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The interpretation feature has been activated. Click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for public comment closed today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure you were signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. We will begin with the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 18th, 2023 School Committee meeting as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins.
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Lopera.
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Tran.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll move on to Superintendent's report. I present to you our Superintendent Mary Skipper.
Good evening and thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to everyone. Today marks the first day of Black History Month, a time during which we hold space to honor the legacy and accomplishments of the Black community, the diaspora, and African Americans throughout history and today. It's also a time to reflect on the injustices and struggles endured. From the civil rights movements to groundbreaking achievements in science, technology, and the arts, Black advocates, leaders, scientists, and artists, and beyond, have left a profound and lasting influence on our nation and here in our city of Boston. I'm thrilled to share that we have a series of events scheduled across the district throughout the month to celebrate. And while it is important that we celebrate these accomplishments this month, it is important that we rededicate ourselves to the task of creating a more just and equitable society for everyone year round. Before I begin my report, I would like to acknowledge the BTU payroll issues that I reported on last week. I want to thank the Office of Human Capital for their work to address and reconcile the concerns that have been raised regarding payroll. The Office of Human Capital team has developed a number of internal practices to mitigate and fix the issues moving forward. We continue to work with our BTU partner weekly to discuss and resolve any additional payroll issues as they arise and we become aware of them. With respect to the retroactive pay increases for BTU members, our Human Capital team are working hard to process those retro pay issues and raises, sorry, and raises by February 17. To just give a sense, contract implementation for our family liaison group is a bit more complex and therefore it's on a slightly different timeline. Their pay rates will be updated on February 17, which means that their retro pay will be issued in March. And this has been communicated, most importantly, to the union and to our employees. The lane change that was raised for BTU members with their JD degree has been implemented and will, they will see that actually in their next paycheck. I want to thank the Human Capital team for their work in implementing the BTU contract. We recognize the importance of the retro payments to our BTU members and we really appreciate their patience in the process. The Human Capital team will continue to work with City Hall to develop processes to improve the timeline for making retro rate payments. In addition to the, to process improvements, we're currently hiring more staff, both in the Office of Human Capital and specifically in payroll. And as always, you know, and we say this whenever we meet publicly, if you would like to join the team or you know somebody that would like to join the team, you can find all of the jobs that are available at our website with the backslash Office of Human Capital. In terms of the Green New Deal update, I have several updates. First, first, I'm very excited. We sent out a announcement yesterday to welcome Dell Sansalas to her new role as our first ever Chief of Capital Planning. This change is part of a reorg of our operations division to better support BPS as we enter this exciting and new era of school construction. We know that new builds, renovations, reconfigurations, that they all can really impact the school experience. But they all, in a very positive way, they increase opportunities for inclusive, multilingual, multicultural education with full wraparound supports for students and families. Under Dell's leadership, an expanded capital planning office will be positioned to really pull in leaders from across the BPS. So that from community engagement, special education, to transportation, the labor relations, all of which part of the process, we're able to take advantage of each and every capital project to make the biggest and best impact for our students. Dell will start her new role on February 10. And I know you know Dell from all of the deep work that she's done in transportation. I'm also excited to announce that Dan Rosengard will take over as the Director of BPS Transportation. Dan has been the Deputy Director there. He, Dan really has been an invaluable member of our transportation team and I'm grateful and recognize his continued leadership as we work to implement the Council of Great City Schools' recommendations that this body discussed a few weeks ago. I also want to share an invitation to everyone with us tonight to join an upcoming listening session as part of the ongoing school design study, which will set the foundation for what new or renovated schools look like under the Green New Deal. There's a listening session at the Dearborn this weekend and at the Burke, East Boston, and New Mission over the coming weeks. And there will be a couple of sessions on Zoom as well. You can see the whole schedule and sign up at boston.gov/gnd-bps. The expertise of our school community members is the foundation of this process. And I'm so grateful to everyone who's already joined us and shared feedback, participated in a session as we work to design the future of BPS facilities. Finally, I want to provide an update on the proposed mergers that we've been discussing over the last few months. Last week, we shared an update with the Sumner, Philbrick, Shaw, and Taylor School communities to clarify the proposed timeline for the merger and lay out how the design process will work over the coming months, all in partnership with school communities. For each of the two mergers, we're reconvening a design team made up of school leaders, district staff, families and educators to guide our planning efforts with a racial equity planning tool as our guiding force. We're working to make sure those design teams are diverse and representative of their communities. Some of the feedback we've heard so far is that the timeline for the mergers was too fast. So for both of the proposals, we've adjusted the timeline. The proposal will bring forward, the spring is for the Shaw and Taylor to officially merge in September of 2024. By providing a full year of planning, after confirmation of a vote, brings certainty for families and staff and giving us the year to map out a plan and make sure that the combined school community has all the resources it needs. This means that current Shaw fourth graders will be able to continue learning in the school building next year. Our team has worked to make it possible for one fifth grade classroom to open up next year to bridge that transition. For the Sumner and Philbrick, we're working with our city partners to adjust the renovation plans for the Irving Building. Sumner fifth and sixth graders will be able to stay in the Irving Building throughout the renovation. This will add cost and some time to the project, but it means that the Sumner and Philbrick will be able to officially merge in September of 2025 after the renovation is complete. We plan to introduce both of these proposals to the School Committee this spring. And I'm grateful to the many community members who have provided their input and who will be participating in the design team process to make sure these reconfigurations happen thoughtfully and intentionally for the benefit of our students. And I'll be sure to keep this body up to date on the proposed school mergers as we continue engagement throughout the spring. A few bright spots to share, I want to thank the Celtics, who honored our Educators of the Year during halftime at the TD Garden against, it was a game against the Knicks, a great game. I was pleased to join the BTU President Jess Tang and Vice Chair Michael O'Neill. It was a great game and the halftime was wonderful. Our educators not only got to enjoy the game, but were really celebrated by the fans that attended. Big applause for their hard work throughout the year and their careers. A few congratulations. These are student congratulations. These are students who won awards in the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Competition. This is a competition that showcases art and writing from the nation's most creative teens. So big, big shout out to Juliana Gomez Mira, to Awis Ibrahim, to Christopher Ramos, and to Kenneth Brazil. Congratulations to our student winners. Please join me in applauding them as these Madison, Madison Park Vocational and Technical High School students really made BPS proud. I also want to congratulate Shaleka Joseph, who is an O'Brien Jr. If you had a chance to watch the State of the City or attend it, you got to see Shaleka perform, Shaleka perform a piano piece that she actually composed and then played from memory. This is the third time that I've watched Shaleka play the piano and every time I'm mesmerized. She is such an incredibly talented young lady. But Shaleka and Dell, who is our new Chief of Capital Planning, and Rodolfo Morales, who is our very own school leader at the Bates, they were all highlighted during the State of the City presentation for their contributions. I'm grateful to Mayor Wu for her commitment that she made again at the State of the City for $50 million to build inclusive school communities that all special education students deserve. In addition, at the State of the City, we were, we committed to expand our early college and career pathway programming to help students earn the college credits that they need to graduate and to make their dreams a reality. And this is something, some of these you'll hear as well in the budget presentation. We were also thrilled at the State of the City to hear that a cohort of Fenway High School students, they got a shout out from the mayor lifting up the new partnership with UMass Boston for a fifth year of learning. Expanding college pathways across BPS is a key part of our educational strategy. This collaboration with UMass and Fenway is a shining example of what can be achieved when post-secondary, business, and the philanthropic institutions that are around us come together as a village to support BPS and our students. We're in a month, we're now a month into our school choice season and we've had over 20, 2,875 families register for various schools across the district, which is considerably higher than last year, at which point we were at 2,090. We also opened the Welcome Centers for registration for both Saturday, January 21 and January 28 to provide more opportunity for parents on the weekend. And on Friday, February 3, the first round closes. And although all the appointments are booked, we will process all walk-ins at the Welcome Centers. Finally, later tonight, you will, you'll hear the report from our Chief Financial Officer Nate Cooter about our budget for the FY 2324 academic year. This is my first budget as Superintendent. For me and for our team, budgets are much more than just numbers. You know, a budget really represents our values and our priorities as an organization. I'm excited to share it. I've made it very clear. I find this one of the most exciting School Committee meetings. It's the beginning of a conversation that will continue around our budget for several sessions and certainly throughout the month. And I, so I'm very excited when the point comes to share with you and I know that Chief Cooter is as well to really highlight the investments that we're making. So with that, Chair, thank you for your time to the committee and I'd be happy to entertain questions.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to, for questions and discussion from the committee. Want to remind my colleagues about our agreed upon norm that we each have five minutes, one to two questions. And I'd like to remind BPS staff to also be brief in their responses. If you have additional questions, we'll go around a second. Who would like to begin? Mr. Cadet Hernandez.
I won't be shy. I'll go first. Thank you so much, Superintendent, for the update. Congratulations to the young folks as well as the, the staff who were celebrated recently. And I think I speak for a lot of folks when I say just how excited I am about the, the possibility for continued growth of these nine to 13 or nine to 14 models here in Boston. It's work that was close to my heart in New York. That's where I did my principal residency at the first P-Tech. And you know, it's life-changing work, so it's exciting. The questions I have today, first is just around some of the details of the mergers and particularly, you know, I'm a school choice guy, so I'm curious for families who are getting this news and sort of understanding sort of what's next for them. I'm also curious about what choices they have through the process. You know, oftentimes if a school is identified for closure and it's not an overnight closure, but a phase out, families have the option to transfer. Is that same option given to families through the merger process?
Sure. So actually, I'm going to tag in our Chief of Staff Rochelle as well as Denise Snyder on the enrollment side.
Yes.
I, Rochelle, do you want to go first?
That's all right, Denise. You can take it and I'll follow you.
Okay, terrific, terrific. Greetings. Thank you for the question and you know, I think it's important that one is that this is happening for a year from September and so families who have enrolled for next year nothing in the immediate future changes for them. There's, and in any case, no, no school here is closing, right? This is a opportunity to build a stronger school. We will, I will say round one is closing and that's for transition grades, but we are just also beginning round two, which is for non-transition grades. So for families who may feel concerned about this, they will have opportunities to put in for transfers and we'll support them through a school choice process. But I think the bigger thing here is, is this is not a closure. This is an opportunity for a stronger community and it really is on us to express that and to share the ways in which this is a stronger, if not although changed, community and provide families with information about how they would choose otherwise if in fact, you know, they feel differently.
Yeah, thank you for that. It's more for me is the, and I agree with you and I think there's real opportunity here, but you know, it's different than what folks signed up for. And so in that process, we get to choose, do we want the sort of new product that's being offered? Or do we want to make a different choice? And so I just want to make sure that that's being offered to folks. And one more question separately, and it's just a staffing update question. You know, I had asked for some of the numbers of where we were in terms of highly qualified educators as well as licensed teachers in our classrooms. Do we have any updates on sort of what our ability to narrow that gap since the last time we spoke?
So, remember Cadet Hernandez, I think we can provide that to you in a memo just in terms of the agenda flow. I'm not sure that Human Capital Chief Ketchins will have calculated that right now, but we're happy to provide that for you in a, in a memo.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lopera.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Superintendent, for the report. Also, congratulations to all the folks celebrated. I got the opportunity to be at the State of the City and just in awe and lots of admiration for, for our young people who were present. I do have one question with February break around the corner. I know I've asked this in the past, but would like to just hear an update as to where we are with February break academic opportunities for our young people as well as what the planning looks like for April. I know I've already been signing my kids up for summer activities and so any out of school time opportunities during the vacations. If you can provide an update on that, that would be really helpful.
Sure, certainly. Chief Snyder, do you want to give the latest on the February?
Certainly. So for February, things look really, really good. I want to point out that as we head into February, all of the planning is nailed down and unfrack and we're in 33 schools, as I may have mentioned before. It's our transformation schools as well as some schools that we selected based on opportunity, opportunity gap indexed, opportunity index, sorry about that. We've also been able to put together a list of supports for families during February Vacation Week and we're working with comms to get that posted. But they include the YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club, BCYF Community Centers. There's programs in schools, even though they're not necessarily acceleration academies. One example is Boston Bridge to Excellence. It's happening at the homes. There's also a comprehensive guide to where families can get free passes to the aquarium and the children's museum and the public libraries as well as a list that we've put together on discounted tickets that are available from a number of opportunities such as Go Boston Cards, Go Boston Explorer Pass, Boston City Pass, things that offer discounts to our families. So that list is just about complete and I'm sure you will see that on our website in just, you know, the days ahead. We're finalizing it now.
Appreciate that. I know you mentioned that we're focusing on the 30-something schools as it relates to February break. Are we, for, for students that are not necessarily a part of those schools, you mentioned that there seem to be some one-off, non-acceleration academy, but vacation programs nonetheless, are we tracking participation? And then are we also looking at just return of investment on some of these programs that we're putting into place?
We are absolutely tracking attendance and participation in the acceleration academies. And I'm sure our team is happy to reach out to the unaffiliated programs to check on their attendance. I don't think that's, you know, I think that that's actually really smart, right? We should be keeping track of all of that data. So unaffiliated or affiliated, I'm sure we can report out on that. Because we do have a number of schools who have stepped forward to say, all right, it's not an acceleration academy, but we do want to offer something and so we should be taking a look at how well those are attended. We'll do that.
And for April, is that also the same that it will be like the acceleration academy? Okay, great.
Correct.
One more, remember, so Dr. Chen, do you just want to just talk about April for a minute? Because we, just to also say, we've been meeting, we've started to meet with the nonprofit and the community organizations in the, in the vision of building out a much broader menu of opportunities and more importantly, a communication for families so they know what to be able to use. It, it takes that year of advanced work, which is why we're doing it now for next year and for the summer. But however, we're still trying to impact what we can with April. So, Dr. Chen.
So for the April Acceleration Academy, again, the same criteria, but we are focusing on math. For the, the February one, I just wanted to outline a few things that students will be learning, I think is exciting. Our teaching and learning team created a project-based learning week full of learning that is focused on improving our city with messages to Mayor Wu and these include, say, at the third grade, climate justice or fourth grade art. And these include, say, at the third grade, climate justice, or fourth grade arts and culture, to eighth grade educational equity. But that will follow a day-to-day arc of building knowledge and asking questions, then investigating, exploring and understanding. Wednesday, problem-solving, plan, design and building. Thursday, share, reflect and celebrate. So we're really trying to make sure that they're actually learning something that they can apply and actually convey to our mayor about improving the city. So I just wanted to at least share a taste of what students will be experiencing that will be attending the acceleration academies. And we'll also be able to share with you more specific plans for the curriculum, if you will, for April coming up next.
Thank you for that. Really appreciate that intentionality with the time that we have with our students. And just have one quick follow-up. As we're thinking about summer, and thank you, Superintendent, for saying like planning out the future year. There are so many opportunities within Boston. And we have so many amazing community partners that it just makes sense to, to really be be intentional about the planning for that. I've recently heard from a family who was talking about summer plans as it relates to also transition from sixth to seventh grade. And I know that some of our other, some of our schools, seventh and twelfth grade schools have orientation or summer academies. But obviously, you don't know if you're participating in that unless you know whether you're enrolling in that school. And so just curious if we're thinking again, they brought this up before, about the alignment between our offerings and when families actually have to make choices, be that for schools, but also for summer programming. Because now some of our, some of our families are essentially waiting until June to be able to begin to plan their summer activities for their students, which in Boston is it's impossible. You're essentially relegating yourself to not having summer plans.
Yeah, no, this is, it's a great point, and it's, it's one of the things we started to address, I think, the last session in a question. But, you know, really, we're trying to look at the decision points that exist across all of this and then map it out to see how much sooner we're able to align notification. So again, these, they take kind of the year of the planning, but that's an active process right now that we're trying to do. So I think, you know, the, the moving of the K one into round one was an example, but there's lots more that we're going to be able to do to be able to get information out. I also think that, you know, for the seven, twelve schools, it's, it's, this is an important point in general, and if they don't have a program right now, we want to help them to create one and form it. Because that is a big transition going from a K six or a pre-K six into a secondary school. So, you know, we'll, we will continue to update school committee as we're able to shift. But just know that it's very active right now, and we are looking at the timelines to see how they can lay together.
Superintendent, may I just add one thing? I just wanted to highlight, completely, completely understand the dilemma that we're putting families in. But I wanted to add that the ESI program, Exam School Initiative Program, is really a prep program to help students think about an exam school track. It is not for the kids who've been recently accepted. That usually, when kids are accepted to exam schools, there's usually a week or two of orientation leading up to it. It's not the same as Exam School Initiative, which is really about, I believe, fourth and fifth graders and sort of thinking about how we prepare them to consider programs like the exam schools.
Appreciate that distinction. And I know I'm out of time. The only other piece is if at some point we can get an update for when families can anticipate having summer offerings. I know some of our schools have summer academies, and I also know that we partner really closely with Boston After School and Beyond and many community partners. But even this morning, I was on the, on the site and I didn't see anything posted at this point. So it'd be great to just get a timeline of when families should be able to anticipate that information. Thank you.
Our goal, our goal right now is mid-March. Last year, it was the week before April vacation, so we're about four weeks ahead of schedule from last year. And we keep trying to find ways to make that more and more efficient. So, right around the corner.
Thank you, Denise. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Polanco Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Superintendent, for, for el reporte.
I want to echo what was said before, and I also are a very interested about the school mergings. The echo I'm referring to is to the families who are going to be affected by this mergings. Rafa, somebody told me, the schools have a heart. And every time they close a school, they mutilate the heart. The families are going to be impacted after you try to find a school that is close to your home and also a job that is close to the school that your children are attending. This change is gonna cause a big impact in the families and in the students. I'm very curious to know what the district is gonna do to support these families who definitely need the support, social emotional support. And I, what's the follow-up for these families and students that are gonna be impacted?
Through you, Madam Chair. So I think there's a couple of people that will weigh in on this. But to Ms. Polanco Garcia's point, this isn't just a facilities project. This is about the communities and the communities changing. In some cases, merging. In some cases, eventually closing. And the impact on families and students is very real. So this is why we have created the Green New Deal Office as a way to ensure that family engagement and community engagement is at the heart of the process. And so with that, I know Rochelle, you may want to add to that. And Deputy Tavares may also want to, from the family and community engagement side.
Thank you, Superintendent. So I think a part of when we, when, actually, when we first transitioned into the district in August, September for the superintendent, we walked into a lot of the conversations around mergers. And part of what we identified as something that was missing was the community engagement and just listening to families and spending time, hearing them out and, and, and just working through the process. So I think from there, we put a pause on just the process to really stop and think, how are we engaging our families? What are the steps that we need to take to make sure that we're hearing the voices of, of our families and the communities? Because you are right, the community is impacted by the merging of any school. Moving forward, our, part of our, our goal with creating the new, the new office of, of capital planning and the work is to really make sure that we are engaging the community in a thoughtful way. And I think that's part of why we, we extended the mergers instead of something that's happening in, in next fall. It is something that we stopped and realized we need to do more work with the community. So I, I do want you to know that that is something that we actively think about whenever we have these conversations. I will also highlight that mergers also allow for other things. They will allow for better inclusive education, more ability to serve our English language learners, more resources for social emotional learning, and just some of the pieces that we're not able to do when, 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 if we don't merge. So I, I do think it's, it's, we, it's something that's a priority for us, and it is what we're working towards is constant engagement with families. And actually talking about that in, in the upcoming meetings that we have with what are the supports that you need, what are the resources that you need for your current students, for your students who are starting to transition, for your students who maybe leave before the mergers happen. But that's all in part, that's all work that we'll do in partnership with the school leader and the community.
Licenciada Polanca Garcia, the only thing that I would add to Rochelle's very comprehensive response is our commitment to listening to our families. That there's a lot to be learned from a lot of the engagement opportunities that we provide and actually listening to the feedback and then applying that feedback to our meetings and to the ways in which we do the work with families. And that's a part of the work too, which sometimes takes a lot more time and a lot more investment on our side as a team. And sometimes that's the slower parts of the work that sometimes frustrates folks because it's not the fast part of the work. But really applying the feedback is really a committed part of this work as well.
And that's why, thank you again, Superintendent, and Anna and Rochelle. That's why we have to keep close to our hearts that we have to make the decisions together with the families. This has to be a two-way, not just one-way decision-making. We have to consider our families. So I have another question, and I know that my time is up, but it's, I just need to ask this really fast. I want to know if there's any update on OME? The multicultural office, multicultural, I guess. Oh, multicultural and multilingual, well, office. I am sorry, I didn't know that, that one. I know that there was a plan presented. But I don't know, what can you tell to the families about, if there's, is there an update about it? Or what can you tell us about that? What's being done?
So through you, Chair. I, I think tonight in the budget presentation, Dr. Chen will give some really concrete examples of things we are budgeting for to carry out parts of the OMME strategic plan. Additionally, we will be coming back to school committee after, you know, after budget to be able to update both on special education and on OMME. There are many things that are happening with the plan right now. But some are also contingent on funding, and so they're tied to the budget. So I think tonight in the budget presentation, you will hear bilingual edu, bilingual programming, access to native language expansion, social emotional supports for our SLIF students. And so you'll hear very deliberate investments being proposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carden Hernandez?
It's that moment where things don't click. Apologies. My last two questions for the, this part of our agenda, mostly because I know we have a lot to talk about with the budget. One, just going back to the mergers really quickly. I'm curious and I wonder if this is also back to a conversation we had just a few weeks ago around the, the sort of tug and pull with community engagement. I'm sort of wondering, like, why these mergers? You know, how many can people anticipate? But I guess more importantly, what is the criteria we're using to make decisions around mergers? I suspect some of that is what it might often be missing for folks because it's, we have a lot of under-enrolled schools. So why these schools? And then how are we prioritizing and making those decisions?
So through you, Chair, Rochelle, feel free to jump in. I, I believe we are looking at starting points where we can identify building where we can make improvements to the building to be able to, for communities that are going to merge, to increase for a broader student population, having facilities that they previously would not support the academic programming. These will need to, as we created the Green New Deal Office, this is going to need to accelerate in BPS. Because as we will see in the budget this evening, BPS has had fifty million dollars in soft landings year after year, and that is coming to an end. And so we have to come to the point where we have facilities that actually can support the academic vision of the district. We address the empty seat issue, and we do it in a way that keeps the community at the heart of it in terms of the process. But it, it is something that over the next several years will need to happen. Rochelle, I don't know if you want to address specifically the criteria of these mergers.
Thank you, Superintendent. So from my understanding for these specific ones, as a district, I think we're really trying to create a pathway, a K to six pathway for our students. And these sets of schools are schools that geographically just don't have that pathway for them. So they're, they're fairly close to each other. So we're able to create, with the merger of the two schools, we're able to create a K to six pathway for those schools. So they were both either, most, some of them were either K to three or a K to five. And what our, our plans and intentions are for a transition per K to six pathway.
That's helpful. Is there, is, if, it's fair to assume some of it is also about size, correct?
Yes.
And is there a size or sort of a degree of under-enrollment that we think sort of flags the potential for merging or consolidation?
That's a question that I would probably, I, I, I can't give you the direct answer right now. I would have to look at just the broader scope of the school and just base, gather other information, but I, I wouldn't be able to give you the direct answer right now.
If it's in, oh, sorry, Superintendent.
No, I was just going to say that I think what you're, you know, what you're trying to, to kind of go to is what is the, what's kind of the formulaic criteria that will trigger the conversation around merger or closure? I think that the Green New Deal Office, this is one of the things that they will be looking at in addition to the facilities conditions report that will come out in the spring so that we can be clear going forward and give notice as far in advance to schools and to families as to what, what may be needing to happen in BPS in the future years.
Oh, no, finish your thought.
No, it's okay, go ahead.
No, I think we're probably saying the same thing. It's like that. We'll continue to have communities that feel really confused and lost around the process if they don't fully understand why and why them in a way that is aligned to a sort of system-level policy. Like, this is what we think is a sustainable number. This is what we think is, I don't know, some sort of connective tissue between another school with an attrition rate, like. That sort of like hard data, I think, helps people understand. That sort of like hard data, I think helps people understand why them, why now? At a time where we're making really complex decisions to right-size the district. Okay. Till then, people are just gonna feel like they're being chosen and it's unfair. Um, the second question I have, and I know that I'm running short on time is, it, just around the Acceleration Academy. Um, you know, we were talking about sort of ROI, the sort of return on investment. I'm thinking about that as we're going into a budget conversation tonight. I'm just curious. You know, the Acceleration Academy has a very specific purpose. It's different than other, uh, programming around. You know, to like, keep young folks busy and active and creative, right? Like we are trying to accelerate outcomes. And have we seen sort of in relationship to the ROI? So for me, it's less about attendance and it's more around, you know, MCAS growth and achievement and MAP scores. Like, are we seeing that investment, uh, playing out in the ways that we want it to? And if so, how are the students who attend that programming able to sort of narrow the achievement gap?
Uh huh. Uh, so I, I, I'm sure that Dr. Eccleston and Dr. Chen will wanna, um, answer this as well. Uh, but I think this is why we really narrowed and kind of focused on transformation schools. Um, because this, this, to your point, the Accelerations Academies have a very specific focus. And, uh, we felt that the transformation schools had a structure, um, that could, we could most readily focus on them from an achievement standpoint. Um, and they also just from a, from a support structure at Central, uh, it is easier to organize around the transportation for students and, and other kinds of operational factors. Um, in terms of the actual data, uh, Dr. Eccleston or Dr. Chen, uh, do you wanna just share kind of the initial findings?
Hi, everyone. Uh, it's good to see you. I think, um, I believe the question is on transformation schools and, uh, supportive through acceleration academies. And, um, sorry, I was doing email, um, while, while the meeting was going on. But, um, we, we spent last, uh, between the February and April, uh, breaks. We spent somewhere between five point five to six million dollars on acceleration academies. Uh, and to the earlier question about the return on investment, uh, as we looked at both attendance, um, academic outcomes. We found that these, uh, programs were best attended, uh, by schools, uh, by students in transformation schools. Um, and that those academic outcomes, uh, were, uh, most significant and noticed, uh, in, in, in those schools. Um, so as, as a result of sort of considering that data, both participation rates and academic outcome. And looking at the investments that the district made in those schools. That it seemed to make sense to continue to invest in, um, propping up and supporting our schools that need the most support. Uh, ensuring that they have an additional resource, uh, to move academic outcomes for students.
I, I appreciate that. I guess maybe it's just missing the, the point of my question a little bit. I'm, I'm more interested in what the outcomes are. And so like, do we have anything? And maybe it's for another conversation, but, and this will come up just as we're previewing, like this will be the conversation I wanna have as we're having budget conversations, like what is the return on investment? Specifically, if we're saying this is to, to accelerate outcomes, are we seeing growth moving faster for students who attend acceleration academies versus students who don't? Or versus students with similar profiles who are in the bottom third at a, a school that isn't identified for a, a acceleration academy? I just like, how do we know it's working? More than just people are going, you know, and how do we know it's working enough that it's, it's worth the cost?
Yeah, it's a really important question. I asked those same questions, um, as we were, uh, reflecting on and looking at the progress of students during that time. And I can confirm, um, that we do have that information as a result of an analysis of our last acceleration academies. I don't know the answers off the top of my head. Um, and I don't have that information handy, but we can certainly, uh, provide that information. And we also have a similar evaluation plan for this year's, uh, both February and April vacation, um, uh, acceleration academies.
Great. This will be good for us, and I know I'm out of time, but this will be good for us, that type of data to have. One, cause like, we should celebrate it. Like if we're spending money on this and it's working and it's narrowing the gaps, like let's talk about it and let's promote it and like, everyone should be thinking about this. And maybe this is, as a school committee, the type of initiative and programmatic, uh, thing that we wanna be pushing forward. And if it's not, then, you know, delete and let's try something else. But I'm just curious. If it's working, what does working look like to us? And it has to be more than just people going, right? Like it has to be about closing achievement gaps.
Yeah, I just wanna be super clear that the data around whether it's working or not working was far greater than just participation. That was certainly one of the variables we looked at, but we also, uh, very much studied and looked at the academic outcomes, uh, on multiple measures related, related to that.
Great. Like, I look forward to hearing more about what that was in comparison to, you know, peers.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there other questions? Yeah, Superintendent, I know you did not discuss it in your report tonight, but I'm just wondering if you've got any update around the, um, investigation around the memo that came out in August about the, um, educators.
Uh, so through you, Chair. Uh, so we actually, um, we had a initial meeting, uh, with Attorney Tidwell. Uh, laid out what, um, you know, we're looking for in terms of timeline and, um, she's going to get back with us. Um, part of it is finalizing the data set, um, that she will actually analyze. So she is making progress. Um, and I think it was just important to be able to sort of restate expectations, what it is, what the actual investigation will cover, what it will not cover. Um, and so she is, uh, she and her firm are working hard at it. So that actually just happened this week.
Thank you. And I, and I, I wanna follow up a little bit on what, um, Mr. Cardet Hernandez was, was speaking about with regard to the, um, ex- acceleration academies. I'm wondering about another piece of data, whether we have looked at the students that have, in addition to attending, um, the acceleration academies have also been in some of our summer programming. And, you know, and again, looking at what are the impacts of that? Or are there ways that there would be suggestions made to students around what to select? Of summer opportunities that could continue to build their skillset? Because I'm thinking about in some ways, for some kids, this is almost becoming like a year-round school opportunity. And how does that impact our thinking about opportunities?
That's right. Uh, Dr. Eccleston, I know you, you probably wanna chime in and I'll, I'll chime in after. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I was just gonna communicate, um, one that's a really interesting research question. I can't. Um, I'm pretty certain that we haven't asked this question about, sorry, our principal's calling me, um, that we haven't, um, we have not asked this question about students who have, uh, participated in the February, April, and then summer program. All three of those things, like what they, um, what the academic outcomes for a student who did one, two, or all three of those things. I think that's something I could certainly talk to, um, our research and evaluation team about whether they could retroactively do that or do that moving forward. I think it's a really good question and we should be looking at that information. But I can confirm to the earlier question that we have looked at those as isolated things. What happened for students who participated in February? What happened for students who participated in April? And what happened, uh, for students who participated in summer programming? And you pose a really probably more interesting, more nuanced research question that we should be asking ourselves as an organization.
Yeah, yeah. So through you, Chair, very similarly, uh, the cumulative impact is, is sort of what you're talking about. Um, and I think with acceleration academies in general, it's a good one to look at. What's a short-term bump versus a long-term bump? Um, you know, what is specific to the next MCAS versus long-term achievement? Does it translate into the classroom? Um, I, on the summer programming, we have pretty robust data, um, on, on these pieces. Uh, you know, Boston and beyond, we meet with and, and one of the things that, uh, we spoke with them about is, um, additional data sets that we could capture on the students. You know, we know, um, from the data that, uh, students that participate in the summer and attend three or more days, uh, a week during those sessions, that they then outperform their peers when they come back. Not just on standardized testing, um, but also in the classroom, on attendance, on all of those things. So that level of engagement running through the summer, we know has that, that, um, reverberates throughout the school year. I think the cumulative.
Slow down.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry. Sorry, I got talking, uh, about something I find really interesting. Um, I think the cumulative one, um, is one in which we would want to, through our panorama system, be able to really look at the longstanding impact. And whether we're seeing gap closing, that's long-term gap closing or just short. And so, um, I think that's something we can go back with that lens on.
Thank you. And, and, and my last question really is about, I know, you know, that weekends and week outs, we, we have had lots of issues going on in our communities that have impacted our schools in the next week or so. And just wondering, what are the conversations that are going on as we're trying to look at those issues?
Uh, so through your chair. So I think, um, we are in, in regular dialogue with city partners, um, when there is violence in the communities. That's impacting because our students are either directly involved or indirectly involved and what that looks like. Um, certainly, you know, I, I think I calculated that since my start. Um, I think it's, it's, I think it was close, I think it was ten weekends, uh, since I started five months ago. Um, there has been, uh, either, uh, a student, uh, killed or a student ser- seriously injured. Um, during the evening or weekend timeframe that has then impacted the schools on that Monday. And that just, you know, it gi- it just gives the perspective, um, that there's so much going on for our young people. That when they come into school, uh, as human beings, they, they come with that. Uh, and then additionally, you know, in and around our schools during the school day. Um, there are other sets of things that happen and all of these things have cumulative impact on the students. Um, we are working closely with city partners. So when there is an acute issue, um, or something happens. There is a response both from the city side and from Chief Kelton. And on the so, on our social worker and social emotional support side, uh, as well as safety. And, um, we do our best to make sure that we connect with the school leader, uh, families, yeah, who are involved. And determine what supports are needed to be able to support that next day and the days after. Um, because some of these things have long-term impact. So that all happens very regularly. I think the part we are actively talking about is in those after-school hours, in those evening hours, in the weekend hours. Uh, how can we coordinate youth opportunities? To be able to give our students chances to do things that are more constructive. Um, so that they aren't necessarily, um, you know, just, uh, you know, at home or, uh, you know, uh, in the neighborhoods. And so that's gonna be something that will be a focus for the spring and the summer. As we, um, as we develop out these partnerships. Uh, it is, it is, it's many things that have to happen here, um, to be able to support our young people.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you so much for that.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Are there any further questions, any further discussion? If not, I'll now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you. The report is approved unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have six speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak. And I will remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name used to sign up for public comment. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin this evening with Ruby Reyes, followed by Mike Heishman, Robert Jenkins, and John Mudd. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Ruby?
Um, thank you. My name is Ruby Reyes. I'm the executive director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and Dorchester resident. It seems clear that Superintendent Skipper wants police back in schools. The recent Council of Great City Schools report proposed developing a committee to consider hiring an internal police force. And recommended a new MOU for sharing student information with the BPD. But when school committee member Hernandez asked what the problem was that needed solving and where the data was, Skipper could not answer. What is most evident from the compilation of reports is that the central office continues to have dysfunctional communication. Transportation and special education offices need to talk to one another was one of the bright highlights. Central office staff doesn't seem to have safety protocols to support students and educators. And there certainly doesn't seem to be an overall focus on violence prevention. But the recommendation was to have an MOU between BPS and BPD. BPS needs to have HR technology, but more staff needs to be hired to ensure people are being paid. These reports don't solve the problem of central office dysfunction. And make it very clear by the recommendations that there are very little to no parent or educator recommendations in the reports. As we move into budget season, we are moving into the final year of ESAR funding. Positions that schools have desperately needed are being fumbled because of internal miscommunication in the Office of Human Capital. Superintendent Skipper shared that the eighteen new positions of school safety will be prioritized. How can these positions be fast-tracked over working to address school needs outlined in their ESAR proposals? And current staff not being paid their contractual increases? How will human capital staff be hired to alleviate this problem? When the human capital department can't onboard staff in general? However, Superintendent Skipper is prioritizing school safety information sharing positions. This doesn't seem to make any sense and it's not grounded in the best interest of school communities. Schools determine what they needed through their plans and that is what should be prioritized, not Superintendent Skipper dedication to police in schools. Mayor Wu was against police in schools on the campaign trail. So where is this coming from? In terms of the budget, soft landing dollars supply schools who have been neglected by district leadership to keep the few resources they have at their schools. Weighted student funding formula has never had an equity analysis completed and has had a clear impact of creating inequity in school budgets.
Thirty-six.
Promising to hear that a new type of budgeting process is being developed. It is unfair to continue hurt schools who have been starved of resources by removing soft landing funds without a clear plan. Claiming that you are building the plane as you fly it doesn't mean anything if you're not actually building. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Heishman.
Mike Heishman, Beja, Dorchester. At BPS, every child in every classroom is entitled to an equitable, world-class, high-quality education. We must eliminate the structural and institutional barriers to educational opportunity. This requires a commitment to systemic change in the ways we allocate funding. And make resources available to meet the needs of students to ensure equitable outcomes. The Boston School Committee approved the BPS twenty twenty to tw- twenty twenty-five strategic vision presented by Dr. Casilius on April twenty ninth, twenty twenty. presented by Dr. Casilius on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. We have a new superintendent. I was wondering if this strategic vision was still operational. As we enter a new budget season, we need a strategic vision to guide our work and our budget. I have been testifying at these budget meetings ever since my daughter entered the BPS in the mid nineteen nineties. This old man is still having the same dream. I have a dream that one day I will thank the mayor and the superintendent for proposing a budget that would promise sufficient funding. I don't think today is the day. Haven't seen the budget yet. This proposed budget, I predict, will have insufficient funds. Additionally, some of your plans do not adequately support your strategic vision. You are under pressure to militar militarize our schools. Police, surveillance, and mental detectives embrace the racist politics of fear. This expensive proposal would promote the illusion of safety, but would instead make our schools physically and psychologically more dangerous, especially for our Black and Brown and special education children. Eliminate these funds. Instead, provide sufficient monies for evidence-based and community-centered approaches to school safety. BPS needs to examine the different ways that it too creates a psychologically unsafe school environment. One example is the strong role MCAS plays in our curriculum and testing system. This discriminatory and racist testing system is an invalid method of measuring student school progress. Failure on these tests have terrible consequences for our children in schools. DESI plans on making changes that would be even more harmful to our children.
Thirty seconds.
Turning our schools into test preparation centers is not only harmful, but also financially wasteful. Eliminate these funds. Instead, provide monies that will require every school to come up with a bold and relevant and loving strategic vision and a world-class assessment system that would measure their progress. Obviously, we need more funding for transportation. Obviously, the payroll department needs more funding. For God's sakes, pay our educational workers what they are due and on time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Heishman. Our next speaker is Robert Jenkins, followed by John Mudd, Rachel Young, and Jessica Manna. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Mr. Jenkins?
Good evening. My name is Robert Jenkins. I'm not going to go through the formalities. I'm going to go to the facts. Last Sunday, thirteen-year-old young man who was visiting his grandparents was shot and killed near where they live at, in between three churches. The following day, three students were stabbed a hundred feet from their school and less than twenty feet from an elementary school in broad daylight. Week before last, some students, female students, had a fight where one was stabbed in Latin academy. The reason why I bring these up is because the police are doing their job. They're not even in the schools, but they're responding to these cases, and they are where their swift response has been. People have been arrested. All right, two of the culprits were arrested in the stabbing at Tech Boston. A few months ago, two of my friends who were doing their job were shot out of tire plates because they were doing their job. The culprits were arrested. They were seventeen, sixteen, and fourteen-year-old young men. I am a product of Boston Public Schools, and at the time, they were police in our schools. They were in there for a reason. They were in there to protect us. They are still there to protect us, but I'm going to tell you firsthand. I'm a sports official. I am around BPS schools every day, every week. I am a basketball swim instructor, swim official, and other sports official. I'm official in other sports, and I see our kids on an ongoing basis. A lot of these kids I have, I have I have communicated with them since they were six years old. So I have developed what they look at me as a person that they can come to. All right, I have established relationships. What I'm saying is, whether you know it or not, the police are in our schools. Anyway, they're already in our schools. At the Lee School, they have a great policing program. There are power leagues. There are there are police officers that are working with our kids on a proactive manner. Make the police part of the team. I just came from a community meeting in regards to the thirteen-year-old young man that got killed. Okay, and the police, city officials, mayor's office, parents, we need parents and students' voices. People that are testifying against the superintendent, against BPS, they need to talk to parents and students. Listen to their agenda, not bring their own agendas. Have a nice night.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Our next speaker is John Mudd.
Can you see or hear me now?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. My name is John Mudd. I'm a resident of Cambridge and a longtime advocate in for education reform in Boston. I'm belatedly making my annual and not very successful pitch for the development of a program budget for Boston Public Schools. For the upcoming fiscal year, the school committee should look to the superintendent and the budget department to develop program budgets in some selected areas as pilots for a future broader effort. This, in my judgment, would solve a couple of problems. One, the usual budget presentation focuses on limited new expenditures in selected areas, but not the full budget in those areas. For example, it may emphasize a five million increase in funding for special education, but not tell us what BPS is doing with the overall three hundred and fifty million that is spent in that area. Secondly, the line item budget is hard to understand. It shows the total spend for staff, for other categories like benefits, school supplies, facilities, and so forth. But it is difficult for parents, the public, and I would suggest even for school committee members to know what this actually means in the real world of schools, students, and classrooms. A program budget can help people understand what a budget means in practice. It would show to all of us how BPS spends its dollars in program areas like special education, or English learners, or summer schools, or transportation, or general administration. It tells us not only what we buy, but what we get for the money we spend with narrative explanations about the purpose and context of a program. BPS already has experience with developing program budgets. For example, a two thousand fourteen budget has sixty pages devoted to twelve program areas in various levels of specificity. Section on English learners has nine pages of narrative and tables. There are also fourteen narrative sections under a section on organization and policy, including early childhood, family and student engagement, collective bargaining, school accountability, for example. I think you have the full table of contents for that fiscal year budget. I hope you do. I would suggest that you take a look at it and imagine that if you had a document that had that content in your hands, what it would mean and whether you could understand what the budget was buying and producing better than with the kind of documentation you get on line item budgets.
Twenty seconds.
I'm late in making my annual pitch for a program budget this year, but let's try it in a couple of areas like those specified in the memorandum of understanding with DESI, like special education, like multilingual learning, like safety, like transportation, and lay the groundwork for a full program budget for next year. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Young.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rachel Young. I'm a Sumner parent and a Rosendale resident. I'm one of two Sumner parents that's going to be talking tonight about what requests from our last school committee meeting have been resolved and which ones are still outstanding. We want to be respectful of your time, but we ask in return that you acknowledge us and engage us in a dialogue. So I'm going to attempt a praise sandwich. Thank you, Superintendent Skipper, for getting our design group meetings restarted after a five-month pause. I'll note, however, that our first meeting was seemingly planned without any community input. It was a meeting behind closed doors between our principals and capital planning staff. And this type of opaqueness is really unnerving. It's a pattern where there are closed-door meetings we are unaware of and are not invited to. And the reality is, we end up finding out about them anyway, and it just makes us more distrustful. Our first meeting's agenda is supposed to tackle the racial equity planning tool. We're very concerned that this meeting might be another BPS PowerPoint presentation with no opportunity for questions and answers. We haven't seen the completed R E P T. And despite someone from the superintendent's office paying a visit to Sean Williams at the Public Records Department, my public records request is still, in fact, open tonight. In order for our future meetings to be a success, especially those that are discussing the renovation of the Irving, we need the public facilities department to be directly involved. The capital planning team is just too junior to be able to to engage in the real conversations that we need to have about the renovation. I was kind of disappointed to see the newest hires have no experience in facilities, no experience in building, in public bidding, construction administration, owners' project management. And I can understand if you might not be familiar with these terms, but I would expect those that are running the Green New Deal to know what that means. And I don't think that they would if I tried to engage them in a conversation about those topics. Consistent with all the other departments in the city like B C Y F and B P L, there are public community meetings that the architect presents their designs at. We're asking for those meetings to be planned right now. That was something we asked for last time, and I'm just following up on that because that has not been resolved yet. But I promised a praise sandwich, and if I have the time to deliver that praise, I'm going to try to. We know, especially the school committee, that you're listening to our concerns, especially given the questions that I heard tonight about the seemingly arbitrary and opaque decision-making process surrounding mergers. We know you're listening, even if we feel sometimes our questions could be addressed with more urgency. And so we will practice some patience. If you can in return, promise us some progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jess Manna.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jess Manna. I am a Rosendale resident and a Sumner parent. I'd like to reiterate our commitment that we spoke to last time to being community partners with BPS. My personal agreement that larger elementary schools benefit our children and our thanks to BPS and the school committee for hearing us at the last meeting and making some progress on our asks. I am hopeful that this will be the last time we need to speak at school committee meetings, but I have cleared my calendar through twenty twenty-five, just in case. You know, we have asked for the completed racial equity planning tool. We still have not received it, and simply saying that a racial equity planning tool process overview will be part of the design team agenda is not enough. We know from our own analysis that the Sumner Filbert merger will concentrate Rosendale school population of low-income BIPOC and homeless students. A newly renovated building is only the first step in addressing the harms caused by systemic racism in our school district. We need to know how BPS plans to mitigate the harm this merger will cause. Equity should be a priority when planning these mergers. The Sumner and Filbert communities have had a gross lack of engagement, yes. But we have still had more engagement than, yes, yes. But the Taylor and Shaw communities have had even less engagement, and we are asking you to engage with them equitably. Give them their give their community a two-year timeline like you have allowed ours. Where is their newer renovated building? Where are the harm mitigation strategies for them? Shaw community members have commented to us that the only reason we got an extended timeline is because we are a larger community and we're able to make some noise. They are a small school and don't have that advantage. As we have said, we are not just in this for ourselves. We are in this for equity for all. The Shaw community sent several questions to BPS and have not gotten the answers they deserve. These questions would all be answered prior to a merger announcement if there were clear guidelines for mergers, as Mr. Credit Hernandez mentioned, there should be. Some of those questions were, how does the Shaw-Taylor merger specifically advance the Green New Deal? How was it decided that these mergers are necessary and urgent without a facilities actions plan? And how did BPS select which schools to merge? What are the tangible benefits for Shaw and Taylor students? Neither the Shaw nor Taylor building is currently in a condition to provide a quality guarantee to students. In fact, they are two of the buildings with the highest renovation needs. What are the specific improvements that will be made to these schools? What is the budget and what is the timeline? Based on current enrollment trends, there's enough space in the Shaw building to accommodate grade expansion to sixth grade, at least in the short term, until a newer renovated school building is available. Why are other single-streign schools districts, many with lower concentration of BIPOC and high-needs students, not being merged? It is disheartening to hear that you have understood since September that you were not authentically engaging families, yet seven months later, this has not improved. It is also upsetting to hear that BPS staff clearly have no idea why these communities were chosen to merge.
Excuse me, Ms. Manna?
K through three, and at least three of them had or are capable of having a K through six without merging. You are taking away the stability of a community with no explanation of why or the supposed advantages. We demand equity for all BPS communities. Thank you and apologies for going overtime.
Thank you. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspective. Your testimony is extremely important to us. Our first and only action item this evening is grants for approval totaling four hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. I'll now open it up to the committee for final questions and comments. Are there any questions? No? Thank you. If there's nothing further, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, objection to the motion? Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Credit Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The grants are approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our main report this evening is the superintendent's preliminary fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget recommendation. Before I turn it over to Chief Financial Officer Nate Cooter for the report, I want to invite the superintendent to give introductory remarks. I'd also like to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm really excited to present my first budget. You know, the past five months, I have been out in our schools. I've had the opportunity to see the important work that's happening for our students, and I'm thrilled to share a budget with you tonight that builds on the past investments and actually plans for the future. What I think you'll see tonight is that we're prioritizing investments to support our highest-need students, our Black and Brown students, our special education students, our multilingual learners, centering equity at the core of every investment we make. Chief Cooter will speak to this, but we start our presentation with a vision for opportunity and achievement gap policy. Every child in every classroom, in every school of the BPS system has the same opportunity to achieve greatness within them. We must continue to confront the fact that we, as a system, have historically underserved some of our students, particularly our Black and Brown students, our students with disabilities, our multilingual learners, and our multilingual learners with disabilities. And these students continue to experience disparities in both opportunity and achievement. It is our job collectively to help students reach their full potential, recognizing that our students have a Recognizing that our students have a variety of different needs and provide them with a full continuum of services. Equity is giving every student what they need to thrive. And that's exactly what we're striving to do with this budget. Building on the investments and S R funds from previous years. This budget is hyper focused on supporting stronger student outcomes. As we take on long needed and critical changes in literacy, inclusive education, and multilingual. And secondary education, we're determined to deliver on our promise of educational equity and excellence. As a school leader, I used the the budget season as an opportunity to think and rethink about what's working. To look at data and to determine what's not. I consider what I need to continue for my students and and what could be repurposed, what's not working again through data for better results. In the process leading to this budget proposal, we asked the team collectively here tonight to consider every big and small decision from the student's perspective. Since returning to the B P S, I've gathered different people's perspectives and experiences about what's working in the district, in the community's priorities. These perspectives have informed this proposal and helped shape what I see and our team sees as our priorities in F Y twenty four. Students and our mission to strengthen student outcomes are at the center of every decision we make. To meet the needs of our students and create a fully inclusive, high performing district for all students. We are focusing solely on the work of what is making a difference for our children. This proposal itself comes on the heels of Mayor Michelle Wu's first state of the city address. In which she announced her commitment of fifty million dollars to build inclusive school communities. In addition to her previous commitment of a two billion dollar investment. To ensure B P S has the capital resources to launch a new era of school building projections. And projects with the Green New Deal for B P S. Expanding students' access to a safe, healthy, energy efficient, inspiring learning environment and spaces is critical. And while you'll not see it reflected in tonight's presentation. Please stay tuned for future updates about our shared commitment with the city to grow a universal pre K for the district's youngest learners. The budget's a statement of our values. And I know we've all heard this before, but I truly believe it. It's been the way I have functioned as a as a school leader, as a school network superintendent uh in the district when I was here in Boston. As a superintendent in Somerville for the last seven years, and now my continued work here. Um, at a district level, this is, you know, it's a unique opportunity to to do the same here and to invest in what we believe. Um, is going to strengthen our schools and bring a vision of equity into reality. Um, it is important that this is a team effort. While this is a superintendent's budget to the school committee, it is the reflection of our collective work. And so all of the people on our call, all of our chiefs. And all of our deputies have been intimately involved in the development of the budget. And so they will be speaking in a variety of ways tonight to the work that's at at hand and being proposed in this. So with that, with great pride and knowing that this is the beginning of conversations that will last throughout the month. Um, I turn this over to our CFO, A Cooter, and he will walk you through the F Y twenty four budget proposed.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, Chairwoman Robinson and members of the school committee. My name is Nathan Cooter. I am the Chief Financial Officer here at the Boston Public Schools. I'm a resident of Boston and the proud parent of two B P S students. Thank you for this opportunity to present the fiscal year twenty four budget on behalf of the Boston Public Schools. I am thrilled to present this budget on behalf of Superintendent Skipper and our team. We are proposing an F Y twenty four general fund budget of one point four three nine billion. A sixty five million dollar increase above the current fiscal year twenty three budget to support the children of Boston. We believe this budget will strengthen our schools and bring our vision of equity into reality. For getting into the presentation, I want to take a moment to thank my team. This budget is the collective work of a hundred nineteen school leaders, forty nine central office departments. And to make this happen, my team has been working since October on this budget. More recently, they have been meeting nonstop with school and district leaders for the entire month of January. They've spent more time in spreadsheets than most people ever want to. The finance team is individually and collectively responsible for the quality of this budget that we present to you this evening. And this team, of course, includes David Bloom, the Deputy CFO, Chris Williams, who's been our acting budget director. Dr. Yvonne McCray, our Director of Federal Grants and External Funds. Serena La Rock, the Director of S R School Investments, and our budget team. Mary Gillan, Athena Rasu, Salam Gabreski, Sana Sori, Ty Polite, Stephen Ramirez, and Christina Radley. They are all student focused, equity driven budget wizards, and I am able to present a balanced budget to you tonight because of all of the hard work they did. I want to open with a reflection on this quote from the opportunity and achievement gap policy. It was the starting point for our planning and therefore is a fitting starting point for tonight's presentation. The fiscal year twenty four budget for the Boston Public Schools is guided by the belief that every child in every classroom, in every school deserves the same. And for some historically underserved students, even greater opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive.
Nate, please slow down.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
As we strive to ensure equity of opportunity and enact anti racist decisions. We're called upon to maintain focus on our values. And how those values are demonstrated for our budgets. As the superintendent mentioned, throughout tonight's presentation. We will continue to reference two major themes. Which has been emphasized throughout this planning process. First is that each of our investments must be designed to close opportunity and achievement gaps for our most marginalized students. Including black and Latinx students. Students with disabilities and their multilingual learners. The second theme is community and family engagement. Must continue to partner with our families and our community to ensure we are responsive to their experiences and expectations for their students. This slide is from the school committee's own presentation from April in two thousand twenty one. We share it here because we are also anchoring our budget to the school committee's five goals. In creating the priority areas for this budget, the superintendent and executive team aligned to our goals and values to those laid out by the school committee. Throughout the presentation, you'll notice the consistency between this committee's goals and the superintendent's investment priorities. And this is not an accident. This is a byproduct of intentional alignment. Understanding a one point four billion dollar budget can be a daunting task. So the next two slides are my best attempt to provide a comprehensive, yet easily understandable version of how our budget is changing. The changes in our budget from F Y twenty three to this proposal can be broken down into three main categories. Strategic investments, increased costs, and long term sustainability. The first category is strategic investments. Since returning to B P S, Superintendent Skipper has gathered different people's perspectives. And experiences about what's working in the district and also the community's priorities. These perspectives have informed this proposal and helped shape our priorities for fiscal year twenty four. We believe we can achieve success by focusing and investing in six key areas. Inclusive education strategies, multilingual education. Equitable literacy. Social work, restorative practices, and mental health. High school and alternative education and family and community engagement. The second category is increased costs. This represents the cost increases we incur because by because of the rising cost of providing the same level of service. Of course, we strive to be efficient and effective district office that serves our students and schools well. This year, our major cost areas include collective bargaining. This is the cost of our recently settled negotiations with our unions. For F Y twenty four, we have settled contracts with all of our union partners. Transportation, including the increased cost of fuel, bus maintenance, and salary increases. Facilities, the cost of utilities and maintenance or repairs budget. And finally, special education costs as we see rising student need. The final budget category is long term sustainability. B P S has two sustainability challenges facing our schools. S R funding coming to an end and managing the general funds allocated to hold harmless to hold schools harmless from enrollment declines for the last two fiscal years. For each of those categories, this slide shows the changes from current year budget. The total of all three represents the overall sixty five million dollar increase in our budget. Our strategic investments represent twenty six million in new spending. The first three priorities, inclusive education, multilingual education, and equitable literacy. Represent the bulk of these investments. In the category of increased costs, you can see the first shift in how we're using S R funding differently. Part of the contract for the B T U included reforms that pave the way for more inclusive practices. That portion of the teacher contract has been moved to S R for F Y twenty four. The final category is a net decrease in our overall budget. We are adding fifteen million dollars in school based S R spending on the general fund to secure those investments beyond the life of S R. Simultaneously, we are shifting twenty four and a half million dollars in hold harmless funding from the general fund onto S R. B P S is incredibly fortunate to have the continued support of Mayor Wu and the city of Boston. The mayor's message was clear. To build a better future, we must ensure our students have access to quality learning opportunities every day. We're also set to begin a new era of partnership with the Boston Teachers Union and our other unions. That will ensure every classroom in the Boston Public Schools is inclusive for all students. In addition, with Mayor Wu's commitment to a two billion dollar capital investment. Separate and distinct from tonight's operating budget presentation. We have the resources to launch a new era of school building projects with the Green New Deal. We are working toward expanding access to safe, healthy, energy efficient, inspiring learning spaces. The state of the art classrooms, cafeterias, auditoriums, and other supporting spaces. While our budget has increased over the last four years, we've also seen a decrease in enrollment over that same period. The result is a thirty nine percent increase in per pupil spending over that period. We now spend on average twenty eight thousand eight hundred dollars per pupil. This is total costs, including all school based spending, including teachers and staff. School services budgeted centrally like custodians and transportation and our district office. I'm going to ask my colleagues Senior Deputy Superintendent Linda Chen, Deputy Superintendent Anna Tavares, and Deputy Superintendent Sam DePina to speak to the next few slides. Dr. Chen, Dr. Tavares, and Dr. DePina are all working closely with the superintendent and their respective divisions to implement the superintendent's goals. And have identified key investments that builds on the existing work to complement our previous budgets. And complement S R investments to ensure we are supporting students and families. As mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, the superintendent has prioritized the investments needed to close the opportunity achievement gaps. Building on the regional model and expanding both needs to support students. These investments across the region. I'll now turn it over, Dr. Linda Chen.
Thank you, Chief Cooter. Good evening, school committee members. My name is Linda Chen, and I have the privilege of serving as the Senior Deputy Superintendent of Academics. We have the unique and utmost privilege and responsibility to educate all of our students. Our number one job as a district is to provide our students with rigorous and culturally and linguistically responsive grade level learning on a daily basis that prepares every one of our students for their life goals. We must continue to confront the fact that we as a system have historically underserved some of our students. Our black and brown students, our students with disabilities, and our multilingual learners with and without disabilities. And while we are making progress, these students continue to experience disparities in both opportunity and achievement. And we must work with intentionality and deliberate actions resourced by our budget. This begins with truly seeing each of our students and the greatness within each of them. And ensuring that we provide learning experiences that center their assets while also providing resources that support our students most in need. The superintendent has laid out significant investments in this budget to ensure we are serving all of our students. But especially those we have not centered previously. Each of the priorities here are dependent upon authentic and deep engagement with our families and communities in order for our students to be successful. First, I'll begin with inclusive education. The way forward to deliver on our O A G policy is to ensure every school across the district is fully inclusive. We are committed to fostering an inclusive environment by maximizing every student's potential. The recently negotiated B T U contract provides us with a unique opportunity to move this work forward in expedited way in partnership with our educators who are closest to our students in the schools. Ensuring every school's inclusive requires us to rethink, retrain, and reconsider how we work as a district. Central to this, this effort is the centering of historically underserved students by ensuring every student has access to environments in which they are fully included, or otherwise known as least restrictive environments. Our multi year plan towards inclusive education includes addressing areas of need detailed in the Council of the Great Cities Report on Special Education that you heard previously. In close partnerships with our families, we know our students who know our students best. We need to ensure we track each student's progress and improve our I E P processes where we collaborate on clear goals and align the needs of each student with the type of services that she, he, or they need to be successful while maximizing inclusion. As we move forward system wide with inclusive education. These investments support all of our schools with a strong foundation in strong tier one instruction. Helping our students build the foundational skills they need to succeed by having grade level culturally and linguistically responsive curricula and instruction. And also through the implementation of the multi tiered systems of support or M T S S. By building out district resources for training around the use of data that informs how tier one core instruction is impacting student outcomes and also to provide specific interventions. In terms of our multilingual learners, as articulated in our own strategic plan that we shared in October. We must leverage the rich linguistic diversity of our families and thoughtfully expand bilingual education programming across multiple years. This in particular is an example of how critical it is to partner with our families and communities to build programs where they are both most needed and to to build programs where they are both most needed and to ensure sustained enrollment so that these robust programs can flourish. This includes heritage language, transitional bilingual, and dual-language programs, each with clear benefits and significance considerations for materials and staffing. We are also ensuring that staffing, resources, and program monitoring are prioritized as it relates to our multilingual learners with disabilities. We're investing in strong Tier One core curriculum materials and training across our multilingual programs so that every student has access to achieve grade-level standards. Also, we are investing in intentionally supporting the social and emotional needs of our multilingual learners with limited and interrupted formal education, also known as SLIF for short. As we move on to the next priority area, equitable literacy, we know that the pandemic has revealed further disparities in literacy skills that impact achievement in all subject areas. In alignment with our OAG policy, we must and will continue to provide professional development and coaching for all staff at levels of the district and in schools on eliminating gaps, transforming and improving instructional practices and beliefs, and building a culture of high expectations and achievement for all students. This requires that we double down on our efforts to implement explicit, evidence-based reading and writing support for all students in every school. Through our equitable literacy strategy, all students actively engage in culturally and linguistically responsive, standards-aligned, grade-level tasks and texts daily in all content areas. All of this builds a strong foundation across the system to become fully inclusive. The last priority area I wanted to address is with our secondary students. We will continue to focus on support in our schools and implementing math score requirements. We will also create seamless transitions for all students as they graduate and continue to college and career pathways. This means building robust and multiple pathways that include both early college and work-based learning opportunities. As we move on to the next slide, I want to include some examples of what these investments will provide and also delineate that these amounts and these examples that we'll share reflect the additional investments that are complemented by other funding sources. So, in terms of looking at the first area for inclusive education, this investment here specifically includes reading specialists, MTSS coordinators, and staffing for schools that will begin our district-wide transition to school-wide inclusive learning and our ability to provide a continuum of services for every student. In the second area of multilingual learners, we must continue to expand native language access by increasing bilingual education programming and meet the social and emotional needs of our multilingual learners who are SLIF, Limited Interrupted Formal Education. So with that respect, we will be adding social workers who focus specifically on the very unique needs of our SLIF students. The third priority area is equitable literacy strategy, and we will continue to invest in our libraries to have culturally and linguistic responsive texts that provide grade-level learning for our students and librarians to support the development of literacy skills our students need for all subject areas. And finally, we must prepare our students for life after graduation. These investments will support expanding early college and career pathways for secondary students, creating alternative pathways and programming for students who need additional support in grades seven through 12, as well as supporting schools and piloting the AP African-American Histories course. I know that was a lot, but I do now want to turn the time over to my colleague, Dr. Sam DePina, who will speak to the priorities and investments we're proposing to support our students' overall well-being that are certainly essential conditions for these academic investments to take hold. Dr. DePina?
Thank you, Dr. Chen. And good evening, school committee members and members of the public who are joining us this evening. My name is Sam DePina, and I am humbled and honored to serve as Deputy Superintendent of Operations for Boston Public Schools. I want also to start by thanking my colleagues in the operations divisions for the development of this budget proposal. In addition to the academic investments, the superintendent is proposing that we must also invest in our students' social, emotional, well-being, and safety. These investments are critical to strengthening student outcomes as well as closing the opportunity and access gaps for our Black and Brown students, students with disabilities, and our multilingual learners. One of the first things the superintendent did when she joined us just a few months ago was instituted a regional model to build a network of supports for each school. This regional model has been an essential resource for our schools, with many schools already reporting a stronger climate and culture. The superintendent has added to that model in this budget before you. Our students and staff deserve spaces that are welcoming, supportive, affirming, and provide them with a sense of belonging and community. The diversity of our community is our strength. So when it comes to supporting our students, we must do the following. First, address the dropout and chronic absenteeism rates to ensure our students are coming to school where they can get the support they need. In addition to the regional model, which has allowed us each school to be surrounded with a team of support and resources from the central office, we're prioritizing the implementation of student support teams in every school. We must increase investments in trauma-informed instruction and healing spaces to inform our restorative practices, mediation, and social emotional support. This includes additional investments in anti-bullying campaign and activation of intervention specialists. And finally, increase social emotional supports for multilingual learners. Next slide, please. Over the past few years, we have made some significant investments to support our students' social and emotional needs. These include investments in restorative practices, bilingual social workers, family liaisons, safety protocols, bullying prevention, embedded counselors, and peer mediation. But as Dr. Chen said, this work too requires multiple years of investments. Some of the additional investments proposed in this budget include creating supervisors of attendance per region to support with chronic absenteeism, creation of the Assistant Superintendent of Student Development and Advancement to create peer mediation programs and build out our mentoring program. This includes increased support for department social work by creating a directed position and the creation of equity strategy specialist positions to ensure that there is equitable and accessible implementation of student bonus and support program. In the past, we have utilized Esser dollars over the past year to complement these investments. The purpose of the current proposed budget is to make sure we're leveraging and coordinating all these resources very intentionally. Past Esser investments include things like an increase in safety care training, crisis response for after-hours during vacation and summer vacation, restorative justice consultation, and implementation of practices in schools. These investments will build on our work from the last few years and strengthen the support our students need right now. With that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Anna Tavares, who will speak to the work we're doing with engaging families in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. DePina. Good evening, school committee members. My name is Anna Tavares, and I have the honor of serving as a Deputy Superintendent of Family and Community Engagement. One of the things you heard at the beginning of this presentation, and we hear from the superintendent every day, is how community engagement and equity must be a through line across our entire organization and throughout all of our work. Dr. Chen spoke of academic investments, and Dr. DePina spoke of our investment in students' well-being. We hope you hear and see a clear connection and through line across our collective work. First and foremost, and most importantly, we cannot do this work without the support of our families and community partners. And we must be intentional about emphasizing educational and racial equity, focused on closing our opportunity and achievement gaps, in particular for our Black, Latinx, multicultural, and multilingual students, as well as students in special education and students who are multilingual learners. We need families as partners. Their deep understanding of the work and the investments the district is committing to provides us strong opportunities to support their child's education and needs. Our goal and commitment is to practice genuine family and community engagement practices. These are essential to increasing trust within our community while providing us the opportunity to also receive critical input and feedback, thereby creating a true partnership. This goal will take time and commitment. The superintendent has laid out a number of priorities to improve our family and community engagement. Here are some of them. Increase language access to enable broader parent and community participation. Develop with families authentic community engagement for investments, including the Green New Deal. Commitment to applying the racial equity planning tool to all of our initiatives, budgets, and policies. Center family voice as critical to improve learning opportunities and to move equity. And leverage community and school-based equity roundtables across all our schools. In the next slide, I will share how the district has made some significant investments over the past few years to improve our engagement with families. Family liaisons in every school, increase in translated materials and quality interpretation, supporting engagement through the regional model, investment and equity and strategy managers, family engagement facilitators, and with the continued rollout of the BPS helpline. And just like the academic investments and student support investments, this work will take multiple years of consistent investments. More specifically, our investments have helped to support launching the helpline with six multilingual specialists and a manager, training for family liaisons, upgraded technology for interpretation, and training for staff around language access practices. Outreach to families traditionally harder to reach regarding school registration, expanded out-of-school time learning and activities, and expanding offerings in our parent university to provide families with the information and knowledge to better navigate schools and plan for their children's future. Additionally, our in-person meetings this year focus on engagement activities that are authentic with timely outreach, meetings held in ways that meet the needs of families, including providing interpretation and childcare, among other supports. A last example of the elevation of this work is in one of the first investments the superintendent made when she elevated the work of family and community engagement by creating a deputy superintendent position, placing family and community engagement at the decision-making table to ensure both equity and engagement are through line throughout our organization. Families play a critical role in their children's success and more importantly, in the success of Boston Public Schools. Thank you for listening. I will now turn it back over to Chief Cooter.
Thank you, Dr. Tavares. At the end of each section, we've summarized the specific investments or cost increases for your reference. Anyone who has visited the grocery store, the gas station, or has completed a home improvement project in the last two years knows the painful reality of inflation. BPS isn't immune to rising costs, particularly related to wages and utilities. Simply put, a large portion of our budget increases next year are due to the higher cost of providing the same services year over year. High-quality operations are critical for closing opportunity and achievement gaps. Our transportation policies are investments in ensuring that all students have access to high-quality programs in schools regardless of where they live in our city or regardless of their disability status. The reforms we've put into place for the new transportation vendor contract create greater incentives for on-time performance, ensuring that we don't have gaps in learning because of missed instructional time. And we are continuing to invest in our school buildings, ensuring that we are repairing and maintaining our existing infrastructure. Our community has demanded high-quality buildings that affirm our students' dignity. While the Green New Deal charts a course to replace our outdated buildings, we are ensuring that our budget keeps pace with the rising cost of maintenance. To that end, we are increasing the facilities budget by $18.9 million to cover the costs of utilities, alterations and repairs, building maintenance, and environmental health and safety. This includes $2 million for school painting projects. We also anticipate $12.3 million in increased costs in transportation due to driver and bus monitor collective bargaining contracts, parts and fuel, the new vendor contract, and the increased costs of transporting students experiencing homelessness and in DCF care. 2016, BPS completed a long-term financial plan that identified five areas driving our budget. The first is collective bargaining, district footprint, including our school facilities, transportation, student needs, including and especially our special education costs, and finally, revenue. As you can see from this slide, seven years later, we continue to see cost pressures in all of these areas. You'll also notice that we're moving $16.8 million in salary costs to Esser. This is the portion of the BTU collective bargaining agreement that paid for the inclusion reforms. Post-pandemic, we know that inclusion is not an option, and we felt that this was a critical strategy and aligned with our commitments for Esser. Handling long-term increased district costs will require some important deliberation by this committee. You'll have to address big questions regarding district policies, the number and configuration of schools, and other big policy levers. To better inform us all of those discussions, we've already completed two key reviews by the Council of Great City Schools, one on transportation and one on special education. Led by Andy Alvarez and the facilities team, we're also conducting two critical studies that will inform plans for our district footprint. This includes the facilities condition assessment and our K-6, 7 to 12 educational design study. In the meantime, in collaboration with district team and school leaders, we're building a sustainable budget beyond the end of Esser. That means that meets the future needs of our students and lays a foundation for us to invest in our priority areas. As we take on long-needed and critical changes in literacy, inclusive education, and multilingual education, we are determined to deliver on our promise of educational equity and excellence. As we think about this budget and future budgets, BPS has two sustainability challenges facing schools. ESER funding coming to an end at the end of fiscal year twenty-four and managing the general funds allocated to hold schools harmless from enrollment declines for the last two fiscal years. This budget aims not to reduce critical services to schools in the coming year while also ensuring that school budgets begin to absorb their hold harmless dollars in a strategic way. Our approach for this year to ensure we can sustain these critical services includes the following. Moving critical services currently funded on ESER onto the general fund. Working with school leaders to identify current school-based ESER investments that are aligned to inclusion, multilingual learner program expansion, or equitable literacy. And moving those positions onto the general fund. We feel it is critical to ensure that those positions are funded beyond ESER. We're also shifting hold harmless support from the general fund and onto ESER. This means that schools will not be required to make cuts to services or student supports this year. We know we can't go back to the way we used to do things. The pandemic changed everything and we need to begin to be more focused on the individual needs of students and where they are. We are not proposing a reduction in the overall hold harmless funding. Instead, we're just proposing to change the funding source. Hold harmless was an intentional strategy to stabilize schools serving our historically marginalized communities, particularly those schools serving a higher proportion of Black and Latinx students. While this was an appropriate and effective strategy for the last two years, we need to turn our attention to closing achievement and opportunity gaps. The positions that schools are being asked to move include non-compliance positions such as CFCs, assistant principals, or teachers not required for core instruction. It's not that these positions aren't good for students, and certainly they don't represent poor uses of public funds. But if we're going to be hyper-focused on our most marginalized students, we're going to do what is necessary to close opportunity achievement gaps. Then we need to make difficult choices and ensure that we are continuing to spend money on the most effective strategies. Next few years will require difficult trade-offs, and we need to begin to build the common understanding of what will truly move the needle for students. While ESER represents an incredible opportunity and source of funding, it's only for a short period of time, especially when you consider what we know now about post-pandemic recovery. That is, supporting students after the pandemic requires a multi-year strategy certainly beyond the life of ESER, which ends in the fall of two thousand twenty-four. For the last two years, as I mentioned, we have not asked schools to look critically at the number of classrooms or their overall school capacity. This was intentional. We needed to figure out how much of the enrollment declines were temporary and pandemic-related. This year, enrollment declined by less than projected, showing that this approach was at least partially warranted. Despite that, we are still anticipating continued enrollment declines in future years due to broader demographic trends as we have seen in other urban centers about the overall decrease in school-aged children and smaller entry-grade cohorts. We need to confront our district's changing realities and shift resources in ways that meet student needs and accelerate improvements. The Reimagine School Funding Project is a BPS initiative that seeks to rethink and revise our school funding model. This is another important opportunity for us to define what we want every school to be able to afford and to align our funding policies with our priorities for closing opportunity and achievement gaps. We have the opportunity and responsibility to make sure that our funding practices are explicitly designed to ensure success for the students who need us most. And in keeping with a major theme of tonight's presentation, this eighteen-month-plus project process is designed to bring student, family, community, and school leader voice to the center of the funding redesign process so that we can rethink together how our funding policy can better serve BPS. Overall, the shifts in school budgets led to a decrease of nine point five million dollars in school budgets for next year. That's the net change between those things that are moving from ESER and onto general fund fifteen million and those budget items moving from the general fund onto ESER totaling twenty-four point five million. For those of you tuning into this budget presentation for the first time, I want to take this opportunity to present some of the basics of the budget process and of the budget. Our full budget is available online in Excel and PDF. However, if you want to familiarize yourself with the budget in one table, this is it. We've broken our budget into four main categories. The first is direct school expenses, those items budgeted in schools. This represents the largest portion of our budget. The second category is school services budgeted centrally. These are items in our central budgets in the tables, but they're actually in schools. This includes custodians and transportation costs. The third category is central administration. The superintendent, the central academics team, and other central operational supports. And the final category is non-BPS student services. Those are services like transportation to charter school students that we provide students who are Boston residents but who enrolled in non-Boston public schools. More information can be found online at www.bostonpublicschools.org/budget. Tonight's budget presentation, as well as weighted student funding documents for every school so that you can explore how each school received their allocation, and you can download the budget in Excel as I referenced in the last slide. All of our documents will be translated into major languages and available online. In Boston, the budget process provides a lot of opportunity for public comment and feedback before the school committee votes on the budget. This is the first of our budget hearings. The next budget hearing will be on February sixteenth, where we'll focus on school budgets and we'll go into detail about how weighted student funding works and how our Foundation for Quality ensures that all schools have the basic services we feel that they need. On March first, we'll have a budget hearing that focuses on central offices. We'll do a deep dive on different central office initiatives and explain in better detail how our current budget provides services in support of student achievement. Ultimately, the school committee will vote on our budget the fourth Wednesday in March, which this year is March twenty-second. And that will kickstart the process with the city that begins the second Wednesday in April. There's still a lot of work to do, and this budget represents the beginning of our work together to ensure that every child in every classroom, in every school of the Boston Public School system has the same opportunity to achieve greatness. With that, I'll turn it back over to Chairperson Robinson, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cooter, for the report, and I want to thank you and the entire financial team for your tireless work to getting us to this point. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Mr. Cardad Hernandez.
It's like a game of chicken. Who's gonna go first? So I'll go first. Thank you so much for the presentation. I have a few questions. I have a bunch of questions, so we'll start. Superintendent, you started the presentation talking about a sort of analysis that you've gone through around what's working and what's not working. And, you know, later in the evening, Mr. Cooter, you know, talked about sort of the goal for sustainability. We are still increasing spending, and so it's sort of, I'm grappling with sort of sustainability in the context of spending increase. But I guess I'm also curious from your lens, what is not working? And is somewhere in some of these documents, are we getting rid of anything? Are we ending any programs? Are we stopping doing anything? And then how does that show up in this budget?
Through your chair. So, you know, I think it's sort of a unique position in that coming into the superintendency, there was already commissioned three pretty large-scale reports and a systemic improvement plan. So from a data perspective, you know, different than what you would normally do when you come in and assess, there's already plenty of data-rich information from the Council of Great City Schools and DESI highlighting areas of the organization systemically that need work. And some of these areas, transportation, special ed overlap. What I've attempted to do in my conversations with leaders, parents, community, our own staff, union partners, is to try to kind of bring to life the areas over and above what's mentioned in those reports as to things that have been investments that we feel are working or not. And so what I think you you see here is the process of the schools themselves that Nate alluded to or that Chief Cooter alluded to, that when they're sitting in the budget collab and they're they're looking at what they're making investments in, that's that's kind of a process that didn't exist in the same way. In the past, everything just sort of rolled forward and then you added on top. And I think this was the first year, and I think I referenced it in a previous school committee, where we have to kind of build up the muscle of our organization to look at data and to see what initiatives are good returns of investment, what are in the priority lenses, and what's in the work in those areas for students who have traditionally been underserved? And what is nice to do, but isn't necessarily having the impact that we need to have? So this budget's the first step of that at the school level certainly, and at Central, as the Central offices think very similarly to what they're doing for work in the support of the schools and their priorities. Although it is true that we are adding, what I think you'll see in a couple of the slides that Chief Cooter put forward is that a good portion of the increase is to go toward things that are increasing in cost. It costs more to do those things, and those are things like transportation. They appear on the offside. When we look at the pure investment side, those investments directly line back in many ways to the systemic improvement plan. So we're talking about on the academic pieces equitable literacy. We're talking about special education inclusion. We're talking about bilingual education. And we're talking about at the secondary level, a small component to begin the work of early college and career pathway work. And then threaded through this is leveraging across the departments for the first time each other's work as a way to be able to kind of braid that so that equity is something that is a through line. Family and community engagement is something that is a through line, both in the investments that have already been made and in the complement investments of what we're proposing. So from just a broad standpoint, I think the increase that's there, while it is true that from a sustainability standpoint is not ideal, it is necessary, given where we find ourselves right now with the kind of identifications of systems-level issues that have been shown in Council of Great City Schools reports.
Thank you for that. I guess then the hard part, and maybe it's just the presentation. Like, I don't, it's hard for me to understand what is new. Like, I sort of, I see the headline and then even some of like the Ed You Speak like embedded in it. But I don't know what any of this, I don't know what most of this means, sort of like on the ground. Like, what is the new headcount? How many schools are going to be impacted? You know, like I'm seeing, it's like twenty-six million on a strategic investment for inclusion, social-emotional learning, multilingual learning literacy. It's like less than two percent of the district's budget. Like, I guess I just don't know what. I don't know. I don't know what we're like, what are we going to see different in how many schools? And I and I know that's not a very clear question, and maybe it will get clearer as the budget process goes on. But I guess we've been starting with like, how many new heads are we adding to the system in this budget?
Sure. So I think I think some of these, like take for instance, inclusive education, right? Like, and rolling out inclusion. As the school budget process goes forward, those things become more defined as we actually put headcounts to the models as the schools are proposing those. And so those will become clearer as the budget process proceeds. And that would be true also with the bilingual education, for instance. I think in some of the smaller areas, it's a lot easier to be able to speak very specifically to, as I think Chief Cooter kind of, and some of the deputies said, there'll be, you know, there's a director here or there is school-based staff in the form of social workers for SLIF. And so I think those are very easy to kind of reiterate what the headcounts are. But I think in some of these, it is an iterative process that we're working with the schools because these are system change projects. That's what inclusion is. That is what bilingual education is, to some extent equitable literacy in the form of reading specialists say.
So floor to ceiling, though, like floor, what is the bottom level of additional headcount? And then ceiling, what could it be?
Sure. So Chief Cooter, I don't, I don't know if you have that developed out yet.
Yeah, certainly, Superintendent. And I think David has the FTE count ready to go. Also, just wanted to add, I'm definitely hearing that when we go into the schools hearing in two weeks, it's an opportunity for us to provide specific examples on the inclusion side of what schools will be receiving, and then specific examples, the more details around some of the ESER shifts. But from an FTE count, David, did you want to jump in?
Yes.
Deputy CFO on the team. Sorry. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. David Bloom here. The budget as currently presented tonight reflects two hundred and nine additional FTE over our current budget.
And maybe this
Is.
Sorry, Mr. Bloom, continue.
I was gonna say, we're still implementing some of the plans that are outlined here, so that may change a little bit as some positions move to ESER, some positions come off of ESER. But as a, it is a reasonable placeholder for our sort of general expectation of what should change.
And then, and that is on top of what our current vacancy level is, which is at what approximately?
I would defer to the Office of Human Capital in terms of our current vacancy rate. But yes, so this, this is an expansion of FTEs while we do anticipate that we have increased our salary savings amount, which is our measure of what percentage of our budget will be left vacant. We do anticipate some of the hiring returning to more normal rates going in future years, that it won't continue to be at this low of vacancy rate.
It will be helpful. I think it'll be helpful for us, but also probably for the general public, like it's a, whatever the headcount increase is, is really on top of the current unspent funding for existing headcount because we're not showing in any of what I'm seeing that we're taking any of that, those heads back. And so not knowing what the current gap is, we don't have, like, I want to know the number of like, we're, you know, in the next fiscal year, we're trying to fill 300 positions, 400 positions, 500 positions. And so I don't know, maybe before the evening, if we can get that from Human Capital, I think that'd just be helpful for us as we're really like wrapping that around it.
And data on positions we're filling for next year, we'd probably be coming back with for the March 1st budget hearing because we are still in the middle of our human capital process.
Yeah.
For getting ready to post positions for next year.
But even thinking of forgetting what we post for next year, it's like, what did we not fill for this year? And so like, that can even be an interesting number for us to sort of make meaning of, like, what is currently on like, we're able to fill, and then we want to add on top of that, it's maybe we can do it. I raised the same question last year, I suspect, I believe, that sounds like me. Right? Like, then where how big is this? This, this whole?
Yeah. And so through your chair, we, so we, from the vacancy side, this is something like very early on, we, you know, when I first came in, we've been looking at, trying to identify also why the vacancy. Is it because it's a hard-to-fill area? Is it a licensing area? Is it a residency requirement issue? You know, is it a, is it because of leave? There's lots of reasons why the vacancy could exist, and so we've been looking at that and asking our central departments to go through that exercise as well, on both the school-based vacancies and then our vacancies.
Yeah, I just worry like, it's more time people are spending trying to fill more positions and then not like doing the work, you know? I have one last question, and I don't, I suspect that I'll be a second. It's good to see like, long-term sustainability as a goal, but what is the actual scope of the fiscal challenge that we're trying to solve? Like, we're spending 134 million in Esser this year, a portion of which is on holding schools harmless, but how much of this do we expect to that we will need to sustain in fiscal year 25? And what new revenue sources are we planning to identify, or do we expect the city to provide for us, like, the additional 130 million budget increase? I guess I'm just trying to figure out, like, what's the estimated fiscal savings the district is looking to achieve by fiscal year 25 through, you know, the Green New Deal and the Reimagine School Funding Project?
Yeah, I would say, from the Reimagine School Funding Project, I don't think the goal there is for us to identify savings. The goal there is to really clearly define what we think and expect every school should have for resources. Part of that will help us define what is the sort of floor operating costs we have from the student experience. I think a lot of times when we start talking about the minimum compliance budgets, it's really that, it's like, what is it that we can't cut without violating a contract or regulation? But that's not what we want for our students. In terms of this, the Esser shift, part of it, the goal was for 50% of last year's Hold Harmless to move. That was to be able to identify what are those positions on school budgets that are our potential for reduction? And so that you could start to see what are those things that are, could be considered if we went for a cost-reduction strategy for next fiscal year? And then from there, I think we need to have discussions about what are our strategies for reinvesting dollars or filling our classrooms more strategically? And then, of course, additional revenue from the city, we, we have a great partnership with the City of Boston and the finance team. Part of their investment strategy for this year was an intense conversation around where are we going over the next few years so that we don't ramp up our spending without a plan for how to sustain it, both from the city side and from the school district side?
Yeah, through your chair, this is, so as you know, from the last few budgets, this hasn't really been the conversation. It's been, what do we add? Without a thought of, is it a return on investment? And how might we leverage in the organization investments that actually meet multiple priorities? So the example I'll give is, you know, for in, for our SLIF students to support with limited and interrupted formal education, you know, we are investing in a cadre of social workers for this life programming. From an academic perspective, that is essential for access. For social-emotional, that is essential to support with trauma-informed supports and practice. And for family and community engagement, it is essential because it creates an important linkage to the families to be able to to make sure that supports are wrapped around. So that's an example of an investment that actually really in a strategic way cuts across the organization. That's that is the muscle that is an organization we have to develop and work for, both at the central side and at the school-based side. So that, that I think you'll play out, and there's, there's lots of other examples to that. When you get to equitable literacy, we could give you some, but that, that is, um, you know, that, that is what, how we have to think. I also think that from a grant perspective, you know, we several, many of us that are, have come up in BPS remember all resource budgets. Right? Where it isn't just what you're getting from allocation in the city, but that actually we're very creative in thinking of all resource, and that means also, for instance, our circuit breaker, that means, for instance, our, you know, leveraging, you know, grant opportunities, village opportunities relative to community and nonprofits, and taking programming that's already happening and better aligning it to serve our students rather than reinvent the wheel and create our own. So I think we're going into this budget and the budgets to follow over the next several years really needing to be as creative and as all resource as possible.
I'm out of time, so thank you so much.
Catch you the next round. I see several hands up, I'm gonna believe it was Dr. Alkins, Ms. Planko Garcia, and then Mr. Meta.
Echoing the sentiments of this gratitude for the report, just beginning the conversation. I have a couple of questions and then more of a comment to the, to the rest of the committee. My question's sort of fair, I think, around, again, this question of return on investment and how we're thinking about it. And I, the overarching question is, how are we thinking of measuring the outcomes? The, that, I mean, it's great that we have the the first slide that ties to our goals. How are we really thinking about measuring the academic outcomes as a result of all this? And when? I mean, if I'm a parent looking at this presentation, the first thing that I might be seeing is, is that there's an increase per pupil expenditure. How does that necessarily translate into the, to the success of my channels? And so, for example, I'm thinking about even in comparison to last year, district-wide implementation of Mass Core, 9.4 million last year. Where are we with that? You know, what's, what, you know, what's the status update of that? Same thing with, you know, the $5 million investment, and I think native language supports increased to 6.3 million each year. Where do we actually see the outcome? And how are we thinking about measuring that? And then I'll let you all think about that. And then my comment to the rest of the committee is we've heard this time and and time again for a while now. But I think as a committee, we should come together and really think about a policy around sort of the use of the racial equity planning tool. Setting parameters, thinking about on, on a multiple sides, what it looks like from the community standpoint, for one. But also, what's the experience like at the school level? What does it take for a school leader to take away from the daily, the, the number of daily tasks that they have to do to try to engage community in an equitable way, which is a challenge? And so I think guidance from us as a committee, when we have a better understanding of it would be very helpful for the district. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to respond, Superintendent?
Well, just to Dr. Alkins' first questions. So, you know, in the spring, we'll be queued up to give reporting out on the investments that were made. Along with, you know, I know school committee has metrics that were a part of their goals, but also individual departments as well as they had funding for particular initiatives, and so that's something we can report out on. So Mass Core is a great example of how the, the work got moved in the schools and what is still remains to be done. I think for me, one of the things that our team has been talking about, and I'm, I'm I feel strongly about is that as we launch these initiatives, short-term and long-term, that we have to be clear and articulate how we're measuring them, what the data sets look like, what the cadence is for collecting that and reporting it, and then building that in so that school committee, be it through memos in, in public, in publication, or through the actual reports that we're giving you that information. You know, that is, um, not having been here last year with that, that will be a change of practice for us as a team, and one that we're already doing. So I, you know, I think we could go into an example, like, for instance, with inclusion, for instance, like, we could go into an example and talk about, you know, what are some of the indicators of the student experience and the parent experience that I know Dr. Chen and the team are thinking about for the 22 schools that are going to be the first through in the cohort? And so as those get defined, you know, that will be something shared out as part of the inclusion work and investment. But, you know, you're, you're, you're right, you know, completely that this is both in the metric, but it's also in the experience. You know, so for a parent in the investment areas, the, the dollars are going into areas that directly impact how a student experiences their education, what they take from it, what their ability to access is, and what a parent experiences for their child and with their child. So we will make sure as that through line of equity and that through line of family and community engagement that the metrics indicate that. And so that could be through surveying, it could be done through, so, for instance, in the inclusion process through the IEP process and the team meeting, there's lots of ways that we can get data back around this, but the most important thing is it has to be codified so that going into the initiative, we're very clear on how we're going to measure it and report it back.
Thank you. I believe it's Ms. Planko Garcia and then Mr. Meta.
All right. I think Diego is first than me.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Meta.
Just, uh, Rafaela, please go first.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Diego. I want to ask you about the exit fund. Exit fund is in the presentation, they, he saved 50 million dollar for for lo traslado de los servicios financiados por ESE. Que van a invertir 15 millones en lo de los servicios financiados por los fondos ESE. Van a poner dentro del presupuesto 15 millones de dólares.
Okay, so I want to ask you about the ESE funds. It says here that you're going, there's going to be an investment of 50 million dollars as financial services, ESE financial services.
Estos fondos ESE son los que están, estos servicios que proveen estos fondos ESE van a ser trasladados al presupuesto. Esto es lo que estoy entendiendo.
It, I'm understanding that these funds are going to be transferred to the budget. That's what I'm understanding.
Okay, entonces, me preocupa. Me preocupa mucho. Sé que este es el inicio de muchas conversaciones que vamos a tener.
So it concerns me a lot. I know this is the beginning of a lot of conversations that we're having.
Pero sí sé que los fondos ESE fueron, los fondos EXE están destinados para paliar las secuelas de la pandemia, del COVID.
But I know that these ESE funds are destined to help with the problems created by the pandemic with COVID.
Entonces, ¿qué va a pasar cuando esos fondos terminen? Porque estos fondos tienen una fecha de terminación. Entonces pienso en la sostenibilidad del presupuesto en ese sentido.
So what's gonna happen when these funds expire, like, because they have an expiration date? What's gonna happen with the sustainability?
Yeah, thank you for that question, and I think part of what we're doing with Esser is that there's a real tension between the amount of money we have on Esser and being able to fully expend it. But then also setting ourselves up that when it ends, that we don't feel that fiscal cliff, that really tough ending, so that there are major cuts to student supports and services. So what we're trying to do as a district is to bring more focus to those things that we want to make sure are funded on our operating budget and continue. So that if and when we have to make those trade-offs, we make sure we're keeping the things that are most tightly aligned to our strategic vision. And those things that are cut are things that are good services, but they're not as focused on the outcomes that we want to see for our students in the next few years, particularly around multilingual education, inclusion, and equitable literacy.
Definitiva, no, one second. Definitivamente pienso que vamos a seguir teniendo más conversaciones porque hay mucho, 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 mucho que sugerir y que aportar sobre el presupuesto, y yo creo que esto apenas está comenzando.
Definitely, I think that we're gonna have a lot of conversations because there's a lot of input that we, that we have, and so this is gonna be an ongoing conversation.
Thank you. Meta?
Yeah, I share a lot of, sorry, I have a sore throat. Don't worry, it's not COVID. Anyway, I share a lot of the concerns that Ms. Planko Garcia has. Because the the Hold Harmless money, that's being transferred to Esser, right?
A portion of the Hold Harmless will be moved on to Esser, correct?
All right, and that that includes positions such as such as assistant principals. And does it include Paris? Just a question.
It could, you know, it can involve, we're, we're working with schools now to identify what positions are moved over. So it could include teaching positions or instructors like paraprofessionals if they're providing what we consider non-core instruction. So there are multiple ways that paraprofessionals could be used in a building outside of what is required for, say, a special education class.
Okay. Um, I'm just wondering for the positions that will be cut, what exactly are we gonna do to mitigate the the, the things lost? Like, this is just an example, I don't think this would apply at all. But like, for example, if we were to cut a gym teacher, right? And, like, what would an idea be to mitigate that? Like, would it be like to have someone from Playworks come in? Like, something like that to mitigate these things from these teachers being cut? We have to have a back, I don't know, you get what I'm saying?
I do, and it's a great, great question. I do, and it's a great, great question. Thank you for the opportunity to explain this further. If it's feeling confusing, it's because this is a new approach and a lot of the, a lot of the work is very school specific. So in the case of a physical education teacher, some may be funded on ESSER, but only if they are supplemental to the core sort of staffing requirements. So in an elementary school, in a, in a typical school day, an elementary school class will go to a specialist, either an arts teacher, music teacher, a physical education teacher, one period a day. Schools may have supplemented by adding an additional specialist as part of their pandemic recovery strategy. Part of that was to provide more opportunities for students to engage in the arts or to engage in physical education. And part of it could have been to create more common planning time. Because when students are going to their physical education class, their core teachers or classroom teachers are able to get together and plan for instruction and provide feedback and lesson planning together. So that is not part of what we would consider a compliance budget. That's an additional investment. That's a strategy to support students. And so what we're doing now is taking those supplemental services that are all valuable services. I'm not, I'm not trying to say that these are, these are certainly frivolous by any stretch. We're moving them to ESSER to kind of signal that these are the types of positions that are not as tightly aligned to our core strategies. And at, at the risk of, of a bad metaphor, I, I think I, I, I find a lot of interest in, in, in learning about high performing athletes. And so you might have somebody who is training for a marathon, who's a high performing marathon trainer, who if you ask them to play golf, would be terrible at it. What we are asking people to do is focus on what we're trying to achieve. In this case, inclusive practices. And those things that are aligned to perform well and inclusive practices and close to strategies, we're investing in those practices. And if it's aligned to something else, that may be something they're interested in or is something that has value in other educational settings, that we're asking them to disinvest in those so that we can focus on what we need to achieve, which are those three key inclusive strategies. And sorry, inclusive through three key academic strategies, inclusion being one of them.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I'm just asking if there's any way in these circumstances that we can slow down the disinvestment.
So Nate, I, so Chief Cooter, I think what's important to stress is they're not being cut. Right? They're not being cut. Because I think, I think what Diego is thinking is that those positions are going away. And so I think just to be clear, that the funding mechanism is changing. Right? But it is signaling to our schools that we are needing to think about when ESSER ends. And as the soft landings go away, there will be decision points that are going to need to happen in next year's budget and to follow.
Now, can I just say I'm thinking about not next year, but two years out? Because when they will be cut, there needs to be a fallback brace there. Because if, if they're cut, like, if they're cut, there needs to be, it needs to be gradual. Because too fast change sometimes is, can be detrimental.
Yeah, and one of the things that we did when we transitioned to weighted student funding many years ago was introduce this idea of the step down, this sort of soft landing. I think what we've, what's differed over the last two years is it's been a hold harmless, meaning there's been no step down in the process. And so while we prepare for either a new funding model or for a new funding model and for the new realities of our funding levels in the future years, that we are preparing for a more intentional conversation around the things that we will start to step down and those things that we're going to continue. But for FY24, there, there are no cuts to student services and supports as we continue to, to have schools start the process of thinking about these different categories of spending.
And I think, Diego, the point, like what your, your point in underscoring is exactly the challenge across the nation with ESSER dollars. In that there were things funded on ESSER dollars that we see as really important and, you know, certainly contribute to student experience and staff experience. And those ESSER dollars are going away. So nationally, statewide, everyone's going to be in this situation as they do. What we're trying to do is to start to get our schools to think about, in our district offices, to think about what is core to our work and what are the things that we either need to seek other funding sources for or can be absorbed or done in a different way.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Lepero, Mr. O'Neal, and then back to Mr. Cardet Hernandez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know other hands were before me, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna listen to Madam Chair. So thank you for the opportunity. First of all, thank you, Mr. Meta, for pointing out some really important pieces, the, the challenge of, of this fiscal cliff that we are staring a year away from us. And so I think for me, my concern, and I, I voiced this concern last year, is we had about fifty-four million in terms of soft landings last year. We're talking about doing the same for this year on top of the fact that we know we're going to see ESSER disappear. And so I want to know how we're thinking about really grappling with, grappling with the disappearance of ESSER as well as the inability to continue to sustain our soft landings longer term. And I know we're, we're talking about different strategies that we're implementing, but the pieces around Green New Deal, you know, these are years out in terms of actual implementation. And, and we have additional cost investments that we're going to have to put into the system. And so how are we thinking about reconciling the decrease in funding, the decrease in ESSER, but also the, 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 the amount of quote unquote debt that we've amassed by continuing to support schools without full enrollment?
Thank you so much for that. And David Bloom here, Deputy Chief Financial Officer, I'll, I'll take a shot at it. I think there's a couple of things going on in our investments this year that are sort of foreshadowing what's to come around your question. The first is, one of the single biggest investments, probably almost the single biggest item on this budget, is about new money to schools to transition their most promising ESSER spending off of ESSER and on to the general fund. We haven't been able to give that a lot of airtime tonight because schools are still in process. So we don't have a lot of the details yet. But that represents essentially a third of all of their spending on ESSER. What is the most promising things that they'll be able to move and make permanent? The other thing that the superintendent has really been pushing us on is the interdisciplinary nature of a lot of this work. And so the challenge tonight is we've had to present a series of things to you like they're independent when we're really trying to think about them together. So for example, when we talk about nine point six million dollars in inclusive practices, I can think of an example of one school who hasn't finished their planning process yet, so I won't name them, where they've used a big chunk of their ESSER dollars to pilot inclusive practices. And so as we invest more money in inclusion, what that will likely look like for that school is not them adding brand new positions, but making these positions that they've piloted on ESSER permanent and help build additional sustainability. Finally, a part of our whole harmless process this year has been allowing schools to reinvest funds to incentivize closing classrooms. So as we work with schools through this process, they were allowed to take funds from classrooms that were closing that they no longer needed and reinvest it in the priority areas you see in tonight's budget. That comes at no additional cost to us, but is another part of the process of reinvesting our dollars in more strategic things. So they may have lost a third grade classroom and cut a third grade homeroom teacher, but be adding a reading specialist or an academic interventionist or an additional gym teacher or PE teacher. We're definitely not able to take on all of what you've raised in one year, but over this budget and the next, I hope you're going to be able to see some of that transition.
I appreciate that. And I especially appreciate thinking through, right? Like the, the ESSER funding was really an opportunity to accelerate learning given what folks experienced in the pandemic. And so I think one of the questions that I had raised when I initially received the materials is we have, I have yet, I, I feel like I can speak for the committee. We have yet to see what we've actually done with our ESSER funds, right? And so what are, we gave schools a certain amount of money. We were doing pieces centrally, but where, where is the evaluation of these investments? Again, like what, what were we able to accomplish with these ESSER funds? So that we can then make an intentional decision about what future investments are going to look like. And as a committee member, I have yet to see that. I know I can go on the website and I can see like what schools were allocated funding and what their dream project was, but what have we actually done? And what impacts have we actually had is something that we have yet to see. And so for me, as we're thinking about putting together a budget for next year, as well as thinking about future investments for future years, I feel like that's a really core piece of the conversation.
I, I absolutely agree that it needs to be a core part of the conversation. And we will come back, both at the schools hearing and talk more about how schools are spending their money and the updated status on that, including Mr. Cardet Hernandez, some of the requests around vacancies and fill rates. And then at the central hearing will include, I think I've heard it in a couple of different ways tonight. It's not just the additive change. We want to know sort of what we're spending our central budgets on, what's the collection of investments? And then for ESSER, what, what is, what have we spent? What have we made progress on in terms of implementation? And then what are we seeing for early returns in terms of outcomes as well? So it's both, did we spend the money on what we intended to? What's the progress of the implementation? And then given that progress on implementation, what outcomes are we expecting? And to Dr. Alkin's point, on what timeline should families expect to see those changes? So I appreciate that question and it is, I do think it is our responsibility before you cast your vote for this budget that we have explained that well so that you feel like you have a much better handle on it.
Appreciate that, Chief Cooter. And the last piece that I'll mention, and I know I've said this to you previously, but aside from the ESSER pieces, we voted on a budget last year. We voted, voted on different investments and different pieces last year. And it's the same piece, like what, what did we actually do and what impacts are we actually seeing? I know Dr. Alkin's mentioned part of this, but what students and families actually experience is not always the same as what we theoretically talk about doing. And so with, I gave this example earlier today, like libraries. Did we pilot it in certain schools? What's the timeline? How are people feeling this investment? Are they feeling this investment? Is this something we talked about and didn't happen? Like, I think that it's important as we're planning out where we're investing in the future, what have we actually done with the commitments that we've already made? Thank you.
Mr. O'Neal?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, Mr. Cooter, thank you for the presentation. I know, you know, a lot of people start paying attention to football to begin the playoff season and they forget the whole regular season and then the preseason and then the offseason workouts and the spring practice and everything. And to your team, the budget planning and implementation process is almost a year round effort. I know you've been working with school leaders since the fall. And so this is just a step in the process for you. So I, first of all, wanted to have appreciation for the work that you and your team have done. Second role superintendent, I'm well aware, you know, you've been in the role four months or so. And I appreciate you aligning both with your priorities and the school committee goals and values. That was very helpful at the beginning to see. I share, I don't want to repeat what my fellow members have said. I think it's been excellent conversation to date. I do have to add my voice to what Ms. Lepere and Dr. Alkins has said about it'd be very helpful to see last year's investments and what are the results? I think you have to understand the past to be able to look at the future, right? And so that would be very helpful as well as what hasn't worked and what are we taking out? Right? It shouldn't always just be additive. So appreciate those points you made as well. I do have a, a couple of questions or comments, Mr. Cooter. One is, and, and this has been discussed a bit, but I have a slightly different take on it. You know, ESSER, when the federal government approved it, it was done for a couple of reasons. And they said to school districts, one, limit learning loss and try to recover lost learning for students, right? So to focus your investments on that. They also gave us the flexibility to do one times investments in facilities and things like that, recognizing that districts had probably put off a number of ways to improve. I certainly know in Boston, during a number of lean years and budget capital improvements delayed, et cetera, even deferred maintenance delayed, and I'll talk about that in a second. So I understand the philosophy of soft landings that we talk in. And more important than soft landings, because that is, as you correctly point out, Mr. Tuta, that's kind of, Mr. Cooter, that's kind of an older term from when we had cuts. We would try to do step downs, but stop landings for schools that had lost the moments. But more over the hold harmless. I think strategically, we decided as a district that one of the ways to limit learning loss was to hold schools harmless so they didn't have to make changes if they had been losing enrollment. And I think it gets right to Mr. Meta's point, and I thank him for making that, that, you know, it hurts at the school level when you have cuts. And so holding harmless was a strategy to limit learning loss. And I understand that. I appreciate that. I think what we need to flesh out better, and this will be as we get into the next couple of meetings, because I recognize this is the beginning of a two month process. And so I'm not expecting answers to this now, but would love to just lay a couple of topics out as the other members have done that we could address in future meetings, Mr. Cooter. One is not only understanding what's in that we have moved over to ESSER, so what it means in a school by school basis, et cetera. But what's the trade off on that? By spending on this, what have we been missing? Right? What if, if we weren't spending it on, on soft land or hold harmless for schools, what would we be spending it on? So that would be helpful to think about in the future. I am entrusted in more details about facilities investments. There was just kind of one broad line there on it, but would love to get more detail on that. I am increasingly concerned over the term, it's called a tech debt. Right? And so the best way to explain that is Southwest Airlines for years did not update their software literally from the 1990s about how crews checked in. And they kept being warned that they needed to update it. The pilots union was talking about it, the flight attendants union was talking about it. They never did. Everything crashed in December. And that is a term of tech debt because they didn't make the investment in technology. And when I read through the reports on special ed and we talked about data that we're missing there and on transportation data we're missing there on student safety, I'm wondering what the investment is in technology. And, and I think, you know, we saw the tip of the iceberg here with the PeopleSoft issue. And I recognize PeopleSoft is a city program, not a BPS program. I recognize that, but it did impact how we pay our employees. And, you know, what I've been told, it's a creaky system and, you know, it, we have some struggles with it. Where do we stand on technology within BPS? Where do we stand on technology within B P S? Where do we stand on integrating systems, having the latest systems? What our investment is on that? And again, this is something you can address in the future, because to me, that's a perfect example of spending. We could also be doing on NASA to catch up on our technology and do we have a technology debt? And so I'll I'll just stop at that, because again, this is stuff that I think we could bring, and I'm trying to be additive to my fellow members' comments, not repetitive. But these are things I'd love to see brought up at future meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Cardad Hernandez.
Uh, thank you again, and I just want to echo Mr. Meta's comment. I appreciated the approach that you were taking there. Because, you know, these are, this is some of the moments where it's like we get to be brutally honest about what's coming. And I think when we don't do that, we end up in a situation like we're seeing with some of the community engagement around our current mergers. Where it's like we're, sometimes we're like dancing around the reality and like, if I'm, if I'm understanding this, like there is a reality, there will be cuts, there will be cuts. And that probably means unless we think that there's major programs to cut that don't have personnel implications, it sounds like there's personnel cuts that are impacted. But then the other way that I'm thinking about this, as we talk about soft landings, and I agree that I think it's a sort of both and, right? Like it allowed people to stay in stable environments for longer time. And then at the same time, I don't think there was probably the political will to have the hard conversations about rightsizing the system and then doing the work to make that happen. So in the memo, you know, you mentioned the need to consolidate classrooms due to under enrollment. We're going to ask families to partner with us in the work of mergers. I don't know what that looks like entirely, nor do I think, I mean, I don't know, I just don't think we know what that looks like, but we're going to put that ask out. I guess I'm curious on two things, what percentage of classrooms are currently under enrolled? And what percentage of schools are currently under enrolled? And then I guess, sort of, third to that is how many schools or classrooms do we need to consolidate to be able to stop spending the fifty million dollars annually on hold harmless?
I think with all three of those questions, I'm going to need to to work with the team and come back to you, but those are certainly the first two questions around under enrolled schools and classrooms. I'll just note for each of them, that's going to be relative to the capacity that's set at the school level. The the numbers that we have is not necessarily around some sort of theoretical building capacity. It's more around if they have three classrooms, how full those classrooms are. And then that's a elementary school measure, the high school level, because of scheduling, it's a little trickier. And then in terms of the fifty million dollars and the potential for school closures, I think I'll take that back to the team. That's a little bit more difficult. I would also just say we need to set our vision for what we want every school to have. And then we can talk about the trade offs for getting to that vision of what we want our schools. You know, there is certainly the opportunity to have multiple levers to be able to get there. And I see the superintendent looking to add, so I'll stop talking.
Yeah, no, I I think that, I think what you just said is right. And I think the questions that Mr. Kid at Hernandez is asked, are asking are good ones. And certainly we can come back with that. I, you know, it's interesting because you know, yesterday, having gone to the Reni Center and had the honor of hearing Secretary Tutwiler address and the three commissioners, you know, address a pretty broad audience. You know, one of the things that Secretary Tutwiler, who was a B P S principal and and then became a superintendent in Lynn, so just a very much grounded practitioner talked about how with the pandemic, you know, we sort of keep talking about kind of being post pandemic. And yet we see every day from what's happening for our students and our staff that that isn't accurate. And, you know, he talked about setting out a stability, a healing and a transformation. And it's not that you have to do each of those sequentially and you cannot have overlap. But it is important to recognize the value of stabilizing and healing before you're beginning that transformation. And I I felt it very relevant to where we are as a district. Because it is clear for our students in everything we're seeing that they are still very much needing to heal before being able to move on. And at the same time, we have all of our systems that we've identified that need transformation to make sure that the educational equity that we are trying to ground ourselves with that that happens. And so there was lots of conversation about the timing of the strategy and whether you just rip the Band-Aid and you go into this with deep cuts. And yet I I could not see a place for our schools where that could happen. And so I think what we've tried to do is to and I will caveat this to say that in addition to not seeing that right now for where our schools and our students are, I will also say that I don't think our leaders have had to really develop the muscle for making these kinds of fiscal decisions. So the two together, I think for us, would have done exactly the opposite of what Vice Chair O'Neill talked about, which is to destabilize the B P S at a time that we really need to stabilize, ensure healing and begin the transformation. So I think that is the strategy of the budget is in the preparation for transformation, in the preparation of knowing that there's difficult decisions that are going to need to be made fiscally. And getting the information for Green New Deal or determining mergers and closures, getting cost savings relative to that at the same time that we're looking at other efficiencies across the system. So I I I appreciate and I hear deeply, and I said to the team, I want you to listen closely to every question the school committee members ask. Because the same question you're asking is the same question that the communities we represent are asking. And so it'll be important to come back to you with that information. But I think it's also important to put this budget in the context of where we are as a district.
Yeah, I think I think that that makes sense. And it's one, it's like one of those both and moments, like we have to, you know, we have to do both. Just another question here. I I guess I'm I'm putting my principal, my former principal hat on. And since you said you asked everyone to to listen to the questions we're asking, because it will be the questions other folks are asking. We are asking schools to make this move with S R, which is a little wink and a nod to future decisions that will be difficult, that will probably be around cuts, even if they're faded cuts. In addition to these other measures that we know we need to do in order to solve the fiscal cliff and right size the system, including closures and mergers. Is the district moving any money? And if so, how much and what is that going to look like? Because I think sort of parallel process, like are we seeing the district also making decisions around right sizing as well?
So Chief Cooter, you can this is something I have been speaking about and and I I've told our central office that and and this is in a good way. That we, this is the last year, we won't do an actual zero sum budget. Right? Going forward, we need to look at every investment we make and scrutinize it going forward to balance. But in the meantime, go ahead, Chief Cooter.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, there's limited new investments in in central office this year. It's mostly in capacity building and areas that you've that that are in support of some of the big changes we're making. And so, for example, we we know we need to continue to invest in cultural teacher diversity and cultural diversity in terms of our recruiting staff. So we need to sustain some of those S R investments sort of long term. But as the superintendent mentioned, I think there's going to be a critical eye to both the investment, the investments that were promised on S R that have not yet started, and we'll go back and sort of detail out some of the changes that we're making to S R to support this funding that's moving over. And then we need to start our initiatives around really going top to bottom in every department to evaluate their vacancies, to eliminate the ones that don't need to continue to be able to sustain the ones that are most critical.
But there's no plan for any sort of district spend, the operating costs of the district to move any funding onto S R as a way to signal that there will be reduction from the central spend.
Not in the same, not in the same way.
Right. I can think of expenditures, like for instance, to Vice Chair O'Neill's point about technology, the laptop refresh is something that we will move to S R, which is sizable. In rather than distribute over three years, that will be a one time expenditure. Some of the data system, you know, structure pieces that we would normally invest in, we can move. So there are, there are those pieces that we'll be very strategic in doing. And this is all to say that the district central offices are going through the same process as the schools. So as those processes go through, Chief Cooter and Deputy Bloom will be able to give us much more in terms of the concreteness of what those types of expenditures would be.
Copy. And my final question, this one's super easy. I just want to make sure I'm reading the slide correctly. Are we projecting an enrollment increase next year? It looks like we're back over fifty thousand students.
That we we are anticipating fewer students next fall than we have enrolled this fall. However, this fall, we over projected the decline. And so our projected numbers are increasing based on a number of factors, most notably the return of English learner students. But we are not anticipating more students October one or at any point next year than we have this year.
But the fifty, am I seeing a fifty thousand number?
You're seeing a fifty thousand number, but remember that's, we don't anticipate to enroll fifty thousand students at any one time in the district. But we need to build capacity for fifty thousand students so that peak enrollment across grades and programs will will have enough capacity to serve fifty thousand students at different points in the year.
We reach peak at different, with different populations at different times. The other thing I will say in a very positive way is that looking at round one, we're about seven hundred students over and above where we were at this time last year. And that's not, you know, that that's exclusive of the K one. So that's that's amazing and very promising.
I still don't fully understand the projection piece here, but I'm gonna move off of it for now. Thank you so much.
We will, and if for the schools hearing in two weeks, we'll talk more about this projections because it it is a confusing part of the process. And so I think what you're seeing on that slide is the change projections to projections, not actuals to projections. And so you could think about a projections change as two parts. What is the anticipated actual decline in enrollment? And then what is the correction that we need to make to our projections from the prior year?
But it's still a positive change when we anticipate decline. I just, I've, you know, I had seen other projections. I'm thinking about the work that we did in New York and the the goal of projections was to show where you would be at peak enrollment. And you would have the capacity for peak enrollment, not to project more than your peak enrollment would be. And then you get a much more accurate budget exercise. At this point, we're talking about a few hundred students, but given the the balloon, a ballooning spend, I just don't, I don't understand it.
The one way to think about those numbers is there are sort of two sets of enrollment numbers. There's the numbers we use through our budget process, which we refer to how much capacity we're trying to build in the system. And then there's our actual enrollment. This number that we're talking about now is our our budgeted number or the number we're trying to use to build capacity. So going into school year twenty three, we projected a roughly thirteen hundred student decline from year to year going into the current year. In reality, our enrollment dropped only about five hundred and fifty students. So our projection was was too low for what actually happened. And that was offset by the fact that we had thought that might be the case, so we had the whole harmless policy in place. We're projecting a continued decline. So in its in its simplest terms, if if we lost, you know, sort of five hundred and fifty kids this year, and then we're projecting to lose another five hundred and fifty next year, then that would be a total of being down about eleven hundred students. But since we projected a twelve hundred student decline for this year, we would then need to project a one hundred student increase for next year to bring the two year total to what we more accurately project. And we can prepare a slide for the next presentation that goes through the numbers.
But so at some point this year, we were over the fourth forty nine thousand two hundred and fifty one that we projected.
So the the projected enrollment is always above our actual. So when we say we're projecting a number for next year, there's never going to be a point in time when we're at that number. Because special ed enrollment peaks at a different time than generalized enrollment. So we can prepare a slide for you for next time that shows sort of actuals and projections side by side to help explain the difference in those numbers.
Thank you. Anyone else before I make a couple of questions? I I want to thank both of the team. Thank you, Mr. Cooter, Mr. Bloom and your whole team for the work that you've done getting us thus far. But I also want to thank the members for their very thoughtful and probing questions. I feel like we are ready for some very difficult conversations moving forward. The issues that got raised tonight with regard to, you know, making hard decisions, coming, you know, trying to come out of the pandemic and out of S R, but understanding that we're back and looking at whether the whether the direction of the district. And with all of the numbers of changes that we're going to need to talk about in this next year, you know, what is going to be the impact of increasing inclusion? As we're be, as we get the report on the state of our buildings, what is that going to mean? How are those two things, you know, coming together in terms of what the future of our buildings need to be? Also, as we're looking at the changes in, you know, numbers. You know, and will we have more three year olds? We haven't even discussed that, you know, there are just so many different things that will impact both the the number of students, who those students are and what we need to do. But it it's clear from tonight that as a team, we have the appetite to really dig into those conversations. There will be things that we will continue to need from the district because we still need that vision. You know, what is the vision for what this district, given all of these things that we know are impacting us or could impact us? What do we feel the vision of the district will be for the next three to five years? Because we know the decisions we will begin to make around facilities will impact us for twenty five years. So there there's so much about understanding the dollars where they can go, what they represent needs to be clarified. And, you know, I'm looking forward to listening, learning more and also getting some real information about what the past several years on S R has looked like. Not only at the district level, but at the individual school level, so that we best can understand what we have gained from our investments and but where else do we need to to look differently at what we're doing? So I just want to say thank you again, and we clearly look forward to having the next conversations as we move forward over the next two months to do that. So to my members, I say, please keep your questions coming, because I think we we all share many of the same issues we may present it a bit differently, but I think the more that we can all learn together, the better. but I think the more that we can all learn together, the better. We will be able to support, and, you know, the district moving forward. Superintendent?
Yes, thank, thank you, Chair. Could I just ask, for all of our chiefs and deputies, could you turn your cameras on for a minute?
Yeah. Thank you to them.
So I, I want to acknowledge, certainly, you know, Chief Kuter and Deputy Bloom and, and the whole budget and finance, this is a team. That's what we are. This is a team. And, and behind this is also our school leaders, who are going to be working with, with us over the next three to five years to right-size the district, make sure that we're strategic and aligned in how we're spending our budgets. But this is the group of leaders that are going to be leading that work. So I just want to acknowledge them publicly. I want to thank them. It's an honor to serve with all of them. And I can say with, with full confidence that they've put heart and soul into this budget.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. So again, thank you, everyone. And I'd like to remind everyone that tonight marks the beginning of a dynamic two-month budget process. We have a series of remote budget hearings scheduled over the next several weeks, starting on Thursday, February 16 at 5:00 p.m. You can review all of the budget documents online at bostonpublicschools.org/budget. You can email your contents to budgets@bostonpublicschools.org. And of course, you can email the committee by visiting the committee's webpage, Your input is critical as we consider the superintendent's budget recommendation for the next fiscal year. And again, the committee will vote on the superintendent's final fiscal year '24 budget recommendation on March 22. We'll now move on to public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers or public comment on reports.
Thank you. Um, are you, oh, sorry, is there any of your business? I, I'd like just to raise two things that we will have to come together as a committee to discuss at a later date, and we'll probably need a retreat. But part of our responsibilities is the superintendent's evaluation. And I know for the majority of us, people have not done one, so I am going to be coming back to you and setting up a training with Glenn Kucher so that we can understand the process that we will need to take, take on in the next couple of months to do this. The other thing is to remind everyone that we are obviously having, there are a lot of community engagement opportunities to go out and be with the community, to listen to the variety of presentations that are being done across the city for the Green New Deal. And I hope that each person can go to a couple of different ones. I think particularly to go to parts of the city or communities that we're least familiar with, less familiar with, so we can get to hear what the differences are in the conversations and the concerns that different folks are raising as we get to do this work. And so I know Ms. Sullivan has sent out the, the list of dates, and I hope that folks can take advantage of doing those over the next couple of months. Thank you. Anything else before we conclude? If not, that concludes our business for this evening. And the next virtual school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, February 15 at 5:00 p.m. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
He left for Dad.
I see now. Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes, what a notice.
Ms. Blanco Garcia?
Yes, what a notice.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Night. Thank you.